Gentlemen, I've got six o'clock on the time. If you'd all please rise, join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to your republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, welcome. This is the Union Township Board of Trustees meeting for October 11th, 2022, 6:00 PM. Mr. Campbell, let the record show that all three trustees are present. Gentlemen, we're being asked to approve the minutes. Item one is September 13th, 2022, regular meeting minutes. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
No discussion, real call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Loeb?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, gentlemen, Mr. Campbell, do we have any correspondence this evening?
Yes, sir, I have two tonight, both liquor permits. The first one is for Dahara Enterprises LLC doing business as Eastgate Sanoco, 4514 Mount Carmel, Tabasco Road, Union Township, Cincinnati, Ohio, 45244. I have the police report from Mr. Gaviglia saying that he has no objections. And Mr. Floudy has said that they are within their permit.
All right, thank you, Mr. Campbell.
Second one is another liquor permit. It's for Toreros, T-O-R-E-R-O-S, LLC, patio 637 Ohio Pike Suite A, Union Township, Cincinnati, Ohio, 45245. Again, there's no objections on this one. This is actually just a change in ownership for stock. But Chief Gaviglia, again, has no issues with this, and neither does our zoning department. That concludes the correspondence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. There are no proclamations or special, or, I'm sorry, we do have special presentation, no proclamations tonight, but so our special presentation tonight, we have our Union Township Years of Service Recognition Program. We have several individuals to address tonight, so we're going to list and go through that, read off your information. We'll come pass out the recognition mementos there and do a picture, a few group pictures. With that, first off, I'd like to say we've got Scott Gaviglia, Union Township Police Department, celebrating 25 years of service on October 14th, 2022. Officer Brent Grammell, Union Township Police Department, 20 years on October 22nd, 2022. Brian Taylor, Officer, Union Township Police Department, 20 years of service, October 15th, 2022. And we've got in the fire and EMS, we've got Jacob Bryant, Union Township Fire Department, 15 years of service, October 22nd, 2022. We've got Jacob, I'm sorry, Ben Music, Union Township Fire Department, 15 years of service, October 22nd, 2022. Christopher Butler, Union Township Fire Department, 15 years of service, October 22nd, 2022. Matthew McHale, Union Township Fire Department, 15 years of service, October 22nd, 2022. Kenneth Riordan, Union Township Fire Department, 15 years of service, October 22nd, 2022. And Nicholas South, Union Township Fire Department, 15 years of service, October 22nd, 2022. A big introduction there in 2022. So I want to open, open the comments up for anyone from the board for, for all of our service personnel and their years of recognition this evening.
Hey, just thanks for being part of the township and all that you've done for, for the people of Union Township. And, you know, if there's anything we should be doing different and any advice for us, we'd like to hear it. And keep up great work. Thank you all.
No one has less than, on this list, 15 years of experience. That's the minimum on this list. That's incredible. Truly, we appreciate you very much. I do, and I know we do. And appreciate your years of service, dedication, not leaving, staying here, family means the world. Hope you know that. And hopefully, Lord willing, you retire here. We would love that. And so I second what Mr. Becker just said. If there is anything that we can do, our job here is to serve, to help make our police or fire department any better, please let us know, and we'll do our best to make it happen. So, but we love you guys very much, so appreciate you.
I echo the sentiments there of Trustee Becker and Trustee Dills. So not to belabor it, you guys are just rock stars. You're, you know, where the rubber meets the road. And so that's what the community sees and feels every single day, and that's what they expect. You know, if it's from a traffic accident to a lift assist, you know, you know, you know what it's at, and you know it's busy. 15 years of service for, I think I counted that up, one, two, three, four, five, six of you that came in in October 22nd, 20, 15 years ago. That's, that's incredible. You guys will have fun with that one. It's awesome that you probably have a very tight-knit unit, and that's something for unit camaraderie's got to be wonderful. So that's, that's, you know, even outside of that, that's what you absolutely see, 15, 20, and 25 years. So, thank you. And at this time, let's, let's go, we'll come join you down here and we'll grab presentations for you and some photos. If everyone, please stand up.
I'll get the box muscles.
Can you take a couple?
Sure.
Go to the box.
Yeah.
Maybe really see how many.
Right.
Just a thought, like, kind of three of them.
Not for a good answer.
Grab two and I'll grab two.
Chief, are we still, are we still staffed if we get an emergency call? You know?
We all, we got the fire department in here.
Can't, can't tell, we have the fire.
That's all the side of your, exactly.
We can do, that's what we do.
Yeah.
That might not be far enough.
What's the group?
We can do, we can do group and we can do individual, so.
Yeah, it's proper.
You guys want to?
I like the group.
Want you guys to work?
Some of you.
The president, I want him.
Come on in.
Yeah.
Marry your marriage.
Cover her.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not due, this probably is.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, guys.
And then that's the end.
I want to see, I want to see six of the fire back. I want to see the same thing in five years, right? All of you. We'll, we'll be able to plan for that a little bit. Have a big party. All right, moving forward, Jim, we'll open the floor for public comments. Is there anyone here tonight with public comments? Yes. Please state your name and record for the dress.
Chris, Chris Hicks, 444 Woodward Court, Cincinnati, Ohio, 45255. You guys probably have it memorized by now. And I do want to note before I start saying what I'm going to say is that I noticed that Chief Gaviglia started eight days prior to all those other people. So there must have been a huge hiring influx right after he got here. So, but that's great. So I provided a copy to you guys of what I'm going to cover, or read. I'm going to try to stick to it, but it's kind of a draft, just so you can maybe follow along, see what comments I made. Because I think this is actually important stuff, not just stuff to be smirking and so forth, and that you don't like what I say. I know you might not like what I say, but I think it's important stuff. And I think it's, can be informative to you guys, can be informative to our township, and it hopefully can be informative to the state of Ohio and other states. So let me begin. Senator Rand Paul is known for telling us that government is the number one spreader of misinformation. Misinformation was spread by you at your last meeting, and I want to correct the record on two topics. One's kind of a nit, but I want to hit at it. It's the concert series. You guys spent the better part of 15 minutes discussing Leroy Ellington Productions booking and paying for seven acts over the summer for $9,500 total, an average cost of $1,357. But you failed to note that Billy Rock Band booked by you, not Leroy Ellington, was $2,000, or about 50% more than when a private sector booking agent was involved. You decried the value for the attendance, but failed to mention that you killed a major part of public promotion of the concert series. You killed the distribution of an already-produced spring newsletter that had a one-half-page schedule of the concert series. The citizens never got that newsletter. Then you're up there decrying attendance at the concert series. While you are all over fiscal responsibility over $9,500 of Leroy Ellington for concerts, you hid $9,999.60 spent with the Nature Center for memberships and had no discussion of competitive or competitive bidding on the hiring of Brody Conover as law director at 50% more than your own approved rate for a law director that you made like three months before you hired him. You also kept Larry Barbier on at the same time. Further, you guys ran on a platform of uber citizen engagement and fiscal responsibility. When you had discussions like that on the concert series, why don't you invite citizen input? Better yet, why don't you go back to two meetings a month and make one a work session where citizen input can be more fluid? Second thing I wanted to correct the record on is the cost of the baby box. On June 14th, 2022, Monica Kelsey of Safe Haven Baby Box said, standing here, and I quote, "Safe Haven Baby Box is willing to pay for someone to be at that box 24 hours a day in the fire station," end quote. On July 6th, I asked Fiscal Officer Ron Campbell in an email, and I quote, "If she," referring to Monica Kelsey, "were to ask for a bill, what would be the full cost per day?" You would quote, "inclusive of salary and benefits." The answer I got from Fiscal Officer Campbell on which Chief Daimling was involved in this string of emails was $722.88 per day, twice that rate on holidays. That's now over $90,000 total. At the time of your last meeting on September 13th, the total was about $70,000. But Chief Daimling stated at a time, at a time in the meeting where I could not respond, that my claim of $70,000 in cost was not correct. He said, and I quote, "No, that is not correct." So the statement was about the staffing, to put 24-hour staffing, that the dollar amount would be about $70,000. It's actually just over like $1,504 and some change, end quote. That answer was incomplete and deceptive about what Ms. Kelsey had offered and what I had stated. Station 50 is allocated to firemen, not three. A third fireman has been relocated to that station and taken from other work to sit there. Daimling acted like there had been no cost because a fireman on light duty filled the need. After the meeting, I asked Chief Daimling what work was not being done because of the reassignment. He would not answer. On my own, I found that typical light-duty work is important stuff, like business safety inspections, which are supposed to happen annually. Per your own annual reports, in 2019, you did 1,989 such inspections. In 2020, due to COVID, per your report, you did only 198. In 2021, in your annual report, you admitted a number, but said you were responsible for 1,600 commercial occupancies. If, instead of sitting at the baby box, that resource did just four business inspections every 24 hours, that would mean 500 inspections missed so far. So I stand by the truth. Station 50 was never budgeted to have three firemen there. It does. That costs $722.88 per day, per your own fiscal officer, at Station 50, and that was never planned or budgeted to be spent there. But Ms. Kelsey stood here and pledged to pay for staffing. I read the quote. Why are you covering for her? Why are our safety services being politicized? She has been a terrible partner. She has misinformed and fought the law and common sense on staffing, logging, building permits, inclusion of OD JFS materials, and on and on. I was right about everything I said on June 14th. But I can show the folly of Chief Daimling's answer another way. You guys desperately want the law changed
Mr. Hicks?
to not require a person to be present.
Please just address the comments towards us. I don't want to hear hostility towards our staff. Thank you.
But I can show the folly of Chief Daimling's answer another way. You guys desperately want the law changed to not require a person to be present at a baby box to render immediate aid to a newborn. If the extra staffing is actually costing nothing, why do you so desperately want the staffing law changed? You want it changed because the truth is that the costs are significant and ongoing. To the degree we have these boxes for unwanted babies, they should be at hospitals where staff are present for immediate aid. If we have one in Union Township, it should be where immediate aid would be available, like the police station. Apart from correcting the record from last month, I want to provide some additional baby box information that I think you guys could find helpful if you want to pay attention to it. First is on baby box training. The fire department provided me with video of the training done by Safe Haven Baby Box. In the training, Monica Kelsey encouraged firemen to ignore if a baby was clearly over 30 days old and not engage police, which they are obligated to do by law. So she also falsely claimed that any person, not just the parent, could put a baby in a box. That's completely wrong. Embarrassingly, not one fireman seemed to know the Ohio law. Most interesting of all, she claimed that dumpster babies are not saved by her boxes. That is opposite of her marketing. The marketing says, buy these boxes, or babies end up in dumpsters. In the training, she claimed that the abandonment cases the box might address are when a baby is abandoned, but with the intent by the parent that's, that it, they be found, such as when they are left in a cardboard box in front of a fire station. That caused me to survey police and fire agencies all across Claremont County, including our own, as to whether they each had a policy in place for traditional safe haven
Mr. Hicks?
that has existed since 2001 in Ohio.
Is everything written here that you're presenting? Is that word for word that you're reading? Is there anything off-script that you're wanting to say? Because we've got this written record.
Why are you asking this question, Mr. Loeb?
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to continue to go through my remarks. I provided a copy to you as a courtesy.
Is this, is this a copy?
That you, I've provided a copy to as a courtesy, as I said at the beginning. The animosity you have towards accepting information from people that you don't agree with or don't want to agree with is, is not the way you should be.
Mr. Hicks, this, this, this staff, this staff has provided you all the records and information that you want via special request. Our staff and our board have heard you. We will dedicate adequate resources to it to address any concerns. We're working with the Ohio Department of Health and the appropriate authorities to have clear guidance. I'm just seeking if there's anything further that's not off-script for you. It'd be appropriate to yield your time back to the gentleman.
No, I'm going to finish reading the remarks that I provided.
Very well.
And I would appreciate not being constantly interrupted. Perhaps you should listen. Perhaps you should try to learn something.
Please maintain the hostility. Okay, thank you.
You're the one that's, so you interrupt me and then claim I'm the one being hostile to you.
I have a meeting, I have a meeting to run, Mr. Hicks. I'm just trying to keep this on task.
I'm going to pick up where I think I left off.
And not have staff or anyone attacked. Thank you.
Well, I was talking about agencies in Claremont County.
Okay.
So that caused me to survey police and fire agencies in Claremont County as to whether each had a policy in place for traditional safe haven that has existed since 2001 in Ohio, and if they had any instructional signage on their stations. I surveyed 27 agencies. Of 24 that responded, only half even had a policy in place. None had any informational signage. By the way, two had in their policy that they were supposed to have informational signage.
And Mr. Hicks, you provided this information for us, correct?
By the way, our own township did not produce a policy for traditional safe haven in place at all stations, including at Fire Station 50 for a person-to-person safe haven surrender. It all reinforces that information is the issue. Hijacking, photo ops, and monetizing safe haven is not the answer. You guys claim to be conservatives. Can you admit that standard policies and informational signage across the whole county would be more effective, cost far less, and free financial resources for other uses to help moms and babies? For months now, I have offered to pay for informational signs on our stations in Union Township. Why aren't they already there? Would you rather a baby die than accept an offer from Chris Hicks? The second point I wanted to cover as an update on baby boxes is about alarm systems. Safe Haven Baby Box and you seem to want unattended boxes for unwanted babies to be okay in Ohio. If so, you need to be aware of BST and G-Fire, a box in Ohio that has had long-term issues and that points up that the alarms on these boxes are not standardized, have no communications redundancy such as cellular, and many do not have any battery backup. That is all not engineered into the base appliance. That, that also has not been safety-tested despite Safe Haven Baby Box's claims. None of these boxes in Ohio have ever been used. Over 90% across the country have never been used. So maybe sloppy electronics won't be detected until a baby dies in a box. That should be unacceptable to all of us. The third, out of four things I want to update on on baby boxes, is unmanned baby boxes in Indiana. Safe Haven Baby Box claims that the boxes are safe for unmanned use. They claim that Indiana has it right. I started the digging in Indiana and found that Safe Haven Baby Box seems to be breaking the law there, too. Their law also seems to require a person be present in a, in professional fire stations, but does have a clause for unattended stations that are volunteer. This is what the Indiana law requires for such boxes. The box needs to meet these criteria, and I'm quoting directly from Indiana law, is located within one mile of a hospital, police station, or emergency medical service station that is staffed on a 24-hour, per day, seven-day-a-week basis with full-time personnel who hold valid cardiopulmonary resuscitation certification, and that meets the minimum response time established by the county not to exceed four minutes. In Indiana, counties have to have a response time standard for these things. Are you guys going to ask for that in Ohio law? Can you commit to four-minute response time here? How are you going to prove that? And the fourth and final thing that I want to update on is the orange bag. Prior to me, the material Safe Haven Baby Box put in the baby box had never been reviewed by you and were inaccessible until after a woman made a surrender decision. The box, I remind you again, has no signage offering confessional, conventional safe haven, or saying anything like, knock on the door, ring the bell if you want personal assistance. I pushed for inclusion of proper materials, not just Safe Haven Baby Box promotional items, and for information to be available to review before surrender decision. I also pointed out that materials in the bassinet violated Ohio law that requires no debris. I was literally laughed at by Ms. Kelsey, and you tried to get AGOs to side with her. Turns out, I was morally, ethically, and legally right. You now, now keep the information bags outside the box so that someone can take a copy and review prior to making a surrender decision. I wanted to see what is in the bag, so I took one to check. Here it is. I took it out of a box that said, "Take one." Okay? Now, I want to show you what's in this bag, and I want you guys to see what's in this bag. Hopefully, you've all checked. Hopefully, you all took one so that you could check what's in there. There's a set of stuff that was in there before, and there's some new stuff. What's in there that was in there originally? The private baby registry for Safe Haven Baby Boxes that I believe violates the law. I don't think that there, the disclosure of confidential information to Safe Haven Baby Boxes through this form, that is, is, I think, illegal. Why don't you ask the AG for an opinion on that, like you asked for an opinion on not having to include OD JFS paperwork and forms? There's a brief medical thing that has six questions that I don't think's ever been reviewed by a doctor. It has been changed and updated because the original version here told women in, in Union Township to go to Fort, Fort Wayne, Indiana for medical services if they had an issue.
Mr. Hicks, we have heard those comments around you. Does that conclude your comments this evening?
The other thing that's in the box is still the brochures. And now, what are the new things in the box? The new things in the box that weren't there.
Mr. Hicks, we're 16 minutes in, and we have heard these comments. Our staff has heard you, and we're adequately addressing your concerns.
It's the first time I've talked about new things in the box.
We have, we have, you have presented on this before.
So a pen is in the box. That was not provided originally. There's a new brochure on the law that's included in the box that was not there originally. There is the state-mandated form on safe haven surrenders that was not in the box originally. There is a piece of paperwork on the Help Me Grow program, including regional contacts for the Help Me Grow state program to help women in need. Again, not provided originally in the box. There is the state-mandated confidential voluntary health history form that is now included in the box that was not, and also a cover sheet that you guys put together on it to describe what you're supposed to do with it and where you're supposed to send it when you get done with it. And finally, and this wasn't my idea, I think it's a great idea, by the way, there's an envelope in the box that's addressed to be able to return these forms. Because there was nothing in there before. There weren't the forms in there before, but there wasn't, what exactly do you do with these? So now, there's an envelope in the box. I think that is improvement. I think that's improvement. I think now if we get rid of things like a private company's baby registry that they use for promotional purposes, then we'll be making additional improvements. But I thought people might be interested. I know I was interested to see what's actually in there now. Because it's way different than what was in there when this box was launched in Union Township. There's, and it's way different from the, from the attitude that you took of not including some of those things. So in closing, I want to thank you. Now, if you take issue with something I have said, okay, or you want a clarification from me, please ask me now while I'm standing here, while I have a chance to respond. Don't wait until I sit back down and then start talking and spreading misinformation about what I've just said. I stand by every word I say. I research things inside and out, inside and out, on cost, on rules. I research things inside and out, inside and out, on cost, on rules, on laws. And I want to say that it is wrong when you have citizens come up here, when you guys ran on a platform of Uber citizen participation, that you don't engage them here, and then when they sit back down, then you make snide comments, you question what they said, you accuse them of being wrong.
Mr. Hicks, hostility towards the board and the staff is not appropriate for this venue. We appreciate your we appreciate your opinions.
This is America, Mr. Logue. This is America, Mr. Logue.
We appreciate it. This is your time to speak.
I just want to remind you something.
I just don't want attacks at the staff and the board.
I want to remind you of something. You may not be aware of the Constitution, but the First Amendment gives us the right to do what? Redress grievances to our government. Why? Because people like you don't like it when citizens get up and give you grievances. You say you're not allowed to give a grievance. I have given some grievances here, but I have given you some very helpful information that might help make this a better program, not just here but in the state of Ohio.
Mr. Mr. Hicks.
And I would love it someday, Mr. Logue, if you would change your attitude and that your respect for citizens would be for all citizens, not just the citizens you like. So I want to thank you guys for the chance to speak and hopefully some of the information. Obviously, Mr. Logue's not going to take it to heart, but Mr. Dills and Mr. Becker, I hope you'll review it. Ms. Ayers on these signs, I'm ready to pay for the signs, and Mr. Dyming on some of the things that I talk about. I thank you for the improvements that you've made in the box, and I think there's just a little bit to go and would really have gotten there for Union Township, and we can have a more positive approach to how we can make this better for the state of Ohio and for Claremont County and for our country. Thank you, guys.
Thank you for your opinions, Mr. Hicks. Just note, we went 20 minutes there, and the board and the staff have adequately been working to address your special records requests and address your concerns, I think, as noted by your your public comment at this time, and we are working with Ohio Department of Health to ensure that everyone is aware of what the correct and adequate rules are for administering these baby boxes and our fire is staffed 24/7 at the box as it is. So thank you for your comments. At this time, does anyone else have additional public comment this evening? Please state your name and record for the address, please.
Bill Thomas, 838 Dorjean. That's a lot of facts that was just presented, which tells me we've spent thousands and thousands of dollars and man-hours in public records requests since you guys have taken office. These are taxpayer dollars wasted because somebody's pissed off that their trustees and their administrator got removed and quit. It's a waste of time. It's a waste of taxpayer dollars, and quite frankly, and I have checked with an attorney, and I can say this, only a piece of shit would do something like that. Quite frankly, that's what you are, Mr. Hicks.
Mr. Thomas, please drop the hostility.
I've I've checked on this public comment. This has got to stop, and the misinformation claiming you guys are misinformed, he goes back with his keyboard warriors on Facebook, dogs you guys, puts all kinds of manipulated facts on there. This baby box cost the township $10,000, one-time fee, $200 a year renewal. We did it. We did a video on this. We interviewed Monica Kelsey, and we put the facts out there so that the people can watch. It's not $90,000. He's taken Ron Campbell's numbers, a general number, and he's turned that into this is what it's cost the township. It's not what it's cost the township, and you all know that. The sad part is, it's become nothing but politics for Mr. Hicks because he, and I want the public to know this, he's just simply pissed off that his trustees have been removed. He his little backroom deals that he had with Ken Geis have stopped, and that's what this is all about. Historically, I never saw Mr. Hicks at the podium dogging the trustees until Mr. Logue took office. Then, all of a sudden, Mr. Hicks is having problems. Now, the three of you here, and everything's gone to hell. A newsletter that was a waste of time, and with last letter was a group grope of Ken Geis and all the great things he did in this township, the letter was a waste of time. You had every right to abolish the letter, especially the person writing it is extremely biased and sits on his page all the time. So again, manipulated facts, making you guys look bad that you terminated a letter. No, you terminated terminated a letter because it was a waste of taxpayer resources, and so are these records requests. I I mean, it's it's unbelievable. I I don't understand how one person can request so many records in a small township and cost all of you so much time. It's it's sickening. So I there is no answer other than I can request the trustees. I hope you guys put a time limit on public speaking. As as somebody that I believe that people should be able to speak, no one should be able to sit at this podium and take 20 minutes to rant and rave about their lunacy and and bring what their their keyboard warrior Hillary Clinton-loving, worshiping communists that they come up here and want to just take the podium over. So please invoke some sort of rule that shuts him the hell up so we don't have to listen to him anymore. I would really appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Thomas, thanks for your opinion tonight. It's your time. I do have to state, you know, equally, look, this is a meeting I want to run professionally without hostility towards the staff, towards the board. Is anyone else here this evening with with public comment? Yes, sir. Can you introduce yourself and name and address, please, sir?
Hi, trustees. My name is George Martin. I'm with Cincinnati Challenge Ranch at 1466 U.S. Highway 50.
May I ask a question just for the public hearing tonight that you'd like to speak as well for the public hearing on the zoning case?
Yeah.
Or, okay. We will have an open public comment period that will be on the record officially at that time.
Okay, so I came up wrong time.
You're appropriate. You can speak now, but I can also invite you back up for the public hearing to speak as a proponent or a proponent for that case.
What would you prefer?
Uh, we'll can it's it's your time. I mean, you're you're welcome to.
May I make a point of report? We keep the meeting minutes separately for the zoning matter versus the regular meeting, so it might be easier, if you don't mind, sir, that we keep it during the time for the zoning so that the minutes are in the same place?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
I was just too anxious. I wouldn't have missed my spot.
I that's why we put it right up front, so I appreciate you walking up to do that because that's that was a change this board made was to take public comment from the end of the meeting after everything was done and decided to putting it at the very front. That's why why we all hear this up front.
That way, we'll keep the meeting minutes together.
Correct. Great point. Is there any other public comment tonight that is not in regards to a public hearing? Okay, seeing none. Gentlemen, we will continue on with our personnel actions. I'll just make a real quick, I guess, conservative point. We heard two different kind of perspectives tonight about public comment and First Amendment rights, and I mean, we just had a description there really with Mr. Martin walking up. That's exactly why this board, when we set the rules at the beginning of the year, moved public comment up to the first thing in the agenda so the public is there to engage. Now, it's something that we did to improve communication. But I do I do take note. I mean, look, we've got to run a professional, appropriate meeting and with effective use of everyone's time, and when we've heard a point, we do need to take that point and dedicate adequate resources to it and move it forward as far as in in use of yielding everyone's time on that. I'll make a comment on, you know, it's 2018, I believe it's Resolution 32, which which started a process previously in this township, and it was the Miller Place vote, and I'm looking at, you know, some of the Miller Place attendees. I attend every single year, year after year, year after year, and there was literally a lawsuit that was filed, and this township fought against the residents and the businesses in this community that denied them their First Amendment right to referendum the government of 4,000 petition signatures. So, look, in my effort to have a professional and courteous meeting moving forward, it's not to be implied as denying someone's First Amendment right. I do not anticipate as chairman of this board ever ever being okay, me personally, to have the township take the defensive position that the residents do not have the right to referendum their government and to take 4,000 petition signatures and throw it in the trash and then have a defense in court that says that residents do not have the First Amendment right to referendum their government. To me, just simply wrong. I want to make that as a shared point right now to just trustee Joe Dills and trustee John Becker, and I want to keep us moving forward, so I don't want to come off agenda. We've got a busy evening this evening with a lot of great things to get done for the township, and that's why we want efficient, effective meetings moving forward. So thank you all. Moving forward, personnel actions. We have exciting news here. We've got from Police Department, Scott Gaviglia. If you'd please present, you were two hires.
Thank you, gentlemen. Tonight, I'm presenting Caneen Miles to the board for consideration to be hired as a police officer for Union Township. Caneen's a graduate of Glen Estee High School. He earned an associate's degree from the University of Cincinnati, and he currently works as a police officer for the village of Mount Orbe. Caneen has passed all phases of the background hiring process to include polygraph and psychological examination. I'm recommending that the board hire Caneen Miles as a police officer upon successful completion of a medical exam with a start date of 11/1/22 at step one in accordance with the current collective bargaining agreement.
Gentlemen, we're being asked for a motion to approve Caneen Miles for the police officer starting date of November 1, 2022. Do we have that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Wonderful. Any discussion, gentlemen?
No.
Roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Good to have you.
Hey, congratulations. Welcome.
Welcome. Congratulations. We look forward to having you.
Gentlemen, I have one more tonight. Casey.
Tonight, I'm presenting Casey Wallace to the board for consideration to be hired as a communications specialist for Union Township. Casey's a graduate of Fayetteville High School. She currently works as a corrections officer for the Claremont County Sheriff's Department. Casey has passed all phases of the background hiring process to include polygraph and psychological examination. I'm recommending to the board to hire Casey Wallace as a communications specialist upon successful completion of a medical exam with a start date of 11/1/22 at step one in accordance with the current collective bargaining agreement.
Gentlemen, do we have that motion to approve Casey Wallace for a position in communications specialist starting date November 1, 2022?
So moved.
Second.
Wonderful. Any discussion, gentlemen?
Didn't we chief just lose, well, retired and then send an officer over to Claremont County Sheriff's Office?
We had one retired.
So tell the sheriff this is payback. Be good to have you onboard, Casey.
Absolutely. Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations, Casey. Congratulations, please.
Congratulations. Welcome.
Congratulations. We're excited to have you.
All right, gentlemen, moving on. We have our department reports. First, department heads, we've got fire chiefs for an EMS, Chief Stan Dyming.
Thank you, Mr. Logue. For the month of September, the department responded to 189 fire and service calls, handled 518 emergency medical responses that involved 524 total patients, and we transported 383 times to local hospitals. The department completed 1,202 hours of training, were involved in 28 public education details. We had seven hours of EMT, med, Dr. Rite time on the paramedic units, and we were involved with five inspections with the Claremont County Building Department, and that concludes my reporting.
Thank you, Chief Dyming. Gentlemen, any questions for the chief?
Yes, sir. Keep it up, chief.
Hey, chief, thank you. Hey, have we seen any increase in overdose calls? I know there's been a lot of obviously interstate highway traffic and through border security and concerns. How have you been tracking that essentially month after month? Are we kind of static or good years, bad years?
We stay pretty consistent on the amount of overdose calls we make and the amount of Narcan that we're using month to month.
Okay.
But it sure hasn't slowed down.
All right. All right, yeah. And hey, recently, I got to be firsthand, this is outside of the township, but it was a lift assist for my 93-year-old father, and I know that that's something that the township goes through, our fire and EMS. So again, really appreciate the work that the men and women are doing. So it's where where those things are needed, so thank you. All right, moving forward, we've got the chief of police, Scott Gaviglia.
Thank you, gentlemen. For the month of September 2022, the communications center handled approximately 4,600 calls for service or police fire and EMS. Records division pushed through 508 juvenile and adult court-related paperwork documents. Public affairs and crime prevention, the police department conducted a safety talk at Child Focus and a security assessment presentation at the nature center. Officers assisted with the annual lantern light ceremony, and the honor guard presented the colors there as well. Officers also participated in a Down syndrome walk at the Polo Fields. The patrol division, we took 323 incident reports, investigated 111 crashes, conducted 662 traffic stops, issued 159 citations and 510 warnings, conducted 617 field interviews, made 117 criminal arrests, 99 traffic arrests, and served 109 warrants. For the month, the K-9 unit recovered 116 grams of marijuana, six and a half grams of coke, I'm sorry, six and a half grams of heroin, 12 grams of methamphetamine, six grams of cocaine, and 12 narcotic pills. I and V to date has closed 235 cases. On the staff services side of things, we had 146 hours of training. Fuel cost was about $13,000 with 44,000 miles driven, and with just a little luck, we should be able to roll out the blue uniforms in November. We've been suffering supply chain woes like everyone else, but I I believe we'll be ready to go along sleeves in November. We'll have a couple people here if we're ready to go. That concludes my report, ma'am.
Thank you, chief. Gentlemen, any comments for the chief?
Chief, I'm excited for the new updated uniforms. I think you guys will be really happy and, yeah, excited for that.
We're going to look nice.
The it was just the other night, I think it was just a week ago. It was late, like midnight, and I was driving home, and I saw one of your officers pushing a car, and I got out and helped him, and then a second one came where we're making it happen and but did a good job. They're they're real courteous to the guy, too, and so, I mean, he was stuck in the middle of the road. I don't know why, but your officers did a fine job, so but, yeah, good job, chief.
Great. Thank you, sir.
Hey, chief, kind of similar question for Chief Dyming. I know you actually get the reports or response on on overdose deaths. How have you tracked that and saw that in recent years?
So the overdose numbers are a little complicated. The overdose deaths are actually tracked by the coroner, so those numbers are pretty much on par, and they still trend up. Sometimes it depends what county that person passes away in, but those numbers continue to climb. To go off what Chief Dyming said, the overdose numbers, not the overdose death, the overdose runs we go on, those numbers are pretty consistent, but it's important for the public to understand is that Narcan's freely distributed and as well it should be because it's a lifesaver. But when the public uses Narcan, oftentimes, you know, they don't want any official presence there, so those numbers aren't counted. We have no idea what the true number of overdoses is or unless they're reported to us. So I would argue that it's maybe not as bad as eight years ago, but it's certainly not much better.
Yeah. Okay. All right, yeah. I know we've been seeing more rise with fentanyl.
That's correct.
Now, we've not been seizing. It's much harder to detect. I mean, I think the case in New York, it was rainbow colored and hidden in children's toys, and it was 14 pounds of it, which would be enough fentanyl to kill 3 million, 3 million people.
We suspect fentanyl is the cause of an overdose death this morning.
Yeah, okay. All right. Thank you, chief.
Thanks, sir.
All right, gentlemen, moving forward, we've got our service department, Sean Hartness, presenting for us this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Logue. In our cemetery division, in the month of September, there were 18 burials performed generating $9,425. 20 resident graves were purchased generating $10,600. 19 colibarium niches were purchased generating $25,750. 19 foundation orders were purchased generating $5,868.80. The total revenue generated for the month of September was $51,643.80. On the 17th of September, we had the 14th Annual Lantern Lighting. It was well-received as always, a very, very successful event. In our roads division, we had a total of 18 work orders completed on 18 township streets. 19 potholes and two base failures repaired on seven township streets. for the month of September was fifty-one thousand six hundred and forty-three dollars and eighty cents. On the seventeenth of September, we had the fourteenth annual lantern lighting. It was well received as always. Very, very successful event. In our roads division, we had a total of eighteen work orders completed on eighteen township streets. Nineteen potholes and two base failures repaired on seven township streets. Staff is currently ditching in the road right away. In the parks division, the parking lots at Klepper Park and the police department were sealed and striped. And on the September twenty-fourth, staff helped with the township fireworks event. Two hundred and twenty-five moms were placed at various township properties. The facility maintenance division, the parking lot lights and the park and ride lights were converted to LED lighting. I just wanted to give everybody a reminder that junk days are going to be next Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. That's October the twentieth, twenty-first, and twenty-second. Thursday and Friday will be from seven AM to five PM. Saturday, we will be available from eight AM to three PM. And the residents can visit our website for a list of items that are accepted. That concludes my report.
Mr. Harkness? Gentlemen, any questions for Mr. Harkness?
I have a comment.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I got some really nice feedback from the work y'all did down on Omni Road. So appreciate you doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. I got the exact same feedback. Yeah, I was gonna say the exact same thing right here. So, yeah, yeah, good job, Sean. Appreciate you, sir.
Mr. Harkness, let me just clarify, the junk days, it's gonna be, so October twentieth, twenty-first, and twenty-second?
That's correct.
Thursday, Friday, Saturday?
Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
And your timeline on that again was?
Thursday and Friday, it'll be seven AM to five PM, and then Saturday will be eight AM to three PM.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And again, we stated at the Mount Mariah Cemetery lantern lighting, but just a beautiful, wonderful event, well, you know, well organized, and couldn't be done without the staff, the cemetery, Ms. Ansey, and also your service department there. So it just was a wonderful, well-attended event. I believe we went through six hundred-plus lanterns, so.
I think so, yes.
Yeah, really beautiful evening that we were blessed with. So thank you, Mr. Harkness. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
And keep moving forward. Gentlemen, we've got our planning and zoning director, Mr. Mark McCormick.
Okay, moving forward with the activities for September. As far as the inspections, we had seventy-one inspections, eleven complaints, six of those being unfounded, three warning citations, two fifteen-day non-compliance letters, no thirty-day not violation letters, no cases forwarded to the attorney, sixteen cases resolved with and without action, and we had a hundred and ninety-eight signs that were illegal, illegal removed, twelve miscellaneous issues reported, violation monthly total nine, and reinspection violations, seven of those with no nuisances filed. As far as permits, we had one commercial permit, three changes of use, five signs, no portable signs, two temporary sales, two temporary trailers and signs, eleven single-family dwellings, one multifamily dwelling unit, four additions, one deck, four accessory structures, and twelve pools and fences, monthly total of forty-six permits, and the revenue was the highest I think that it's been all year by far, eighty-seven thousand two hundred and fifty-four dollars. And so we've already exceeded in the department the revenue of last year. Other activities that are not here was been reviewing and interviewing potential co-ops. We got a list here last week. My experience is, is if you get a list from UC, you get the co-ops quickly, you get the good ones. So we've already interviewed five people. We plan on offering the job tomorrow, and hopefully it will be accepted by one of our top two candidates, and we'd like every person that we interviewed. I was gonna note that if you have suggestions, I know this has been the format of this report for some time, I would be welcome, I would welcome any suggestions you have on a little bit different reporting. If you want these numbers every month, we'll still give them to you. If you want these semi-annually, we can make them semi-annual and start incorporating other things that you might want to be incorporated in the report. And I'm curious for feedback on what you might like to be reported that's not already in here. I am building a list and encouraging the staff to build a list of activities and things to do, including much needed amendment to the zoning resolution and a lot of other activities. And so, you know, if you have an interest in other things being reported, please let me know. And I would love to sit down with you at some point, maybe discuss some of the things that we're looking at working on.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Gentlemen, any comments?
Go ahead.
Yeah, so, Mr. Chairman, what I'd like to do periodically, starting tonight, is just do kind of a lightning round of just some properties and projects that's going on in Union Township. So those things I get typically asked about, you know, in the community. And so I got about half a dozen of them here. So let's start with Earl's Market. That's an eyesore that's on Old Seventy-four, not far from Sheriff's X Credit Union, where the construction is going on with the Diamond Interchange with the State Route Thirty-two. What's the update on Earl's Market? What's going on with that?
Staff met with the property owner recently about the property maintenance concerns. There have been improvements there. I think there's still some things that need to be done. And we've also talked with the property owner who came in to met with several of us about the long-term prospects for the property. That person has some ideas on what they want to do with that property. But nothing set in stone as that person is also trying to acquire some other property.
Okay, great. Also, the, there's a Hilton property. I want to say it's a home, two suites. I'm not sure about that, but it's one of the Hilton properties that's been perpetually under construction, I think for several years now, that's near the Myers. What's going on with that?
So staff has been working with the owners. They are having issues with sourcing and staffing, sourcing the materials and staffing. But I don't think the completion date is too far out. It's just they're having problems with the sourcing and staffing.
Yeah, a lot of that going around. Also, with TQL, if you're driving down I-275, you see a lot of construction going on to the north of the building. What's happening there?
So they are presently working on the new parking lot, and that's really all they're doing at this point.
Great. So the Kroger that's going to be going into the Sears location, we approved all that, looking forward to that coming together. They have some hoops to jump through before that's a done deal. What's the update on that?
They are working with the different owners involved with the mall, and that's really where they're at.
Okay, fine. There's an Outback Steakhouse that's scheduled to go in where the old Starbucks used to be in a triplex. There was a video store there at one time. I think they're gonna demolish that building. What's the update on that?
So they are also having problems with material sources and staffing. A lot of the bids are coming back high on these projects, and that's slowing people down.
That will do it. Take Five Oil Change, that's gonna go in where the Blighted Wendy's is on the corner of State Route One Twenty-five and Nine Mile Road. What's the update on that?
So the permits have been issued by the township, and the last time that staff had talked with the owners and applicants, they were waiting on permits through the county. But we're really not sure whether the wait is on the county or if the applicants are, for some reason, taking time for some of the issues that we mentioned earlier.
Okay, thank you. Last one I got, unless I think of something else I'm gonna fly here, is I get a lot of questions and there's a lot of concerns with the residents in the Mount Carmel area having to do with the old Kroger that has closed down in Mount Carmel. What, is there, where are we with that in terms of somebody new moving into that building?
My understanding is that Kroger is entertaining offers about how to redevelop the property, and that's really all I can say at this point.
Fair enough. All right, thank you, Tony.
Kroger owns that building, correct?
Yes.
I believe so, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, no, excellent job. You're fitting in the role great. I've called you several times, asked you questions, and you've answered them spot on, gone back with me. So we're very fortunate to have you. Doing a good job so far, Mark. Well done.
Yeah, thank you, Mark. Looking forward to the zoning cases presented tonight. I think that goes in the same vein I was talking about with you earlier, as far as seeing a new way of presenting or seeing information. I'm a proponent of, with government, not having, well, that's the way it's always been done, so that's how we're always do it. It's good to ask those questions, have that fresh perspective. So as much as you look for feedback from us, I look forward to what you may want to put forward that you would recognize it'd be good information to identify or push forward in our community. Maybe it's tracking the, where our sidewalks are and where they end right now, and see where the gaps are, you know, so we can get better connectivity throughout the township. And, you know, actually, to that point, I'll get offline with you and Susan as well, too, and give you kind of a deep dive. But I've been very interested in, well, what's now gonna be the hike bike paddle initiative. But as I recognized, and gentlemen, for your information, too, the county's kind of pushing out on this with Scott Gafferty. So I talked with him to share some background as far as, you know, even as last fall and last year with the prior staff here at the township, I spoke with them about the fact that Round Bottom Road has railroad that moves all across it, and it's a big, you know, target in the sky. But if you could connect into the Village of Batavia with a trail rail, is what it's called, and that connects from there, where they're working from Williamsburg right now, into the Village of Batavia, be a great way. But nonetheless, you know, I think it's gonna, it's a large, large project to be looking at, but I think we have to be part of the discussion. I think Union Township is being kind of the gateway to the county. We need to embrace that and take a part of a leadership role. I'm not necessarily saying like a cost there, I'm just saying, you know, to have the seat at the table and bring the right people to the table, and have community engagement and feedback, and see what the community wants. But from what I've talked a lot in the community, that's what I've heard a lot about, is connectivity, and that's where you get into these hike bike paddle type of initiatives, which are, which are great. And Mark, you come, you come to us from OKI, which had a significant involvement with, well, as far as your recent position with OKI. And I know they've spoken very high regards of you as well with your involvement there with the hike bike and paddle initiative. So I'm excited to see what you're able to work on with that, so.
I was also executive member of the Tri-State Trails Board.
Okay.
Up until the point I had to lose some activity. So I'm pretty well involved with them. And our contact with that initiative here locally is Scott, and he was an intern where I worked for two turns. We liked Scott a lot.
Okay, good.
We have good contact. We have good relationship.
Good, good. Great to hear. So, all right, I think we'll have more to come on that. But no, appreciate, appreciate the fresh perspective and great work.
Thank you, John.
All right, and we'll keep moving forward in respect to public's time. What we've got for this evening, Ms. Ayers, administrators report.
Thank you, sir. A few points this evening. Just to continue, our open checkbook shows up to date through September. The farmer's market continues every Friday, four to seven. We originally indicated that was going to go till October twenty-eighth. I've heard today there's been some concern with availability of produce and the weather changing, so we're gonna shoot foreclosing October twenty-first.
Okay.
A week early. But been a really great event, and thank you to all the staff for getting that worked out. Along that line, I want to, you guys touched briefly, but I want to brag for a minute on all of the staff members that have worked special events in the last month.
Yeah.
Being new to the community this year, I have been so impressed with how everyone handled lantern lighting and the fireworks, and how professional and wonderful everyone has been at engaging the public and doing what needs to get done. I've just been so impressed with everyone, so I can't say that enough. Thank you to all of the staff members who worked those events and did such a great job for the public. I love seeing everybody out and about. It was just very impressive to me. We are continuing to work with the Parks and Recreation Committee. They're next meeting November ninth at six PM here at the Civic Center. They're working to understand the current park system and ideas on ways to improve. At the meeting in November, we're gonna be discussing some ideas for community events in the parks and increasing traffic. So I know we've had some ongoing discussions, and I'll touch on it a little bit later in the budget, about increasing our activities at different facilities around the township. You know, we can utilize some of our underused facilities and get some new ideas for township events. So hoping to discuss with that committee in November with the intent that we can bring it back before you in December about new event ideas for next year. Along that line, also have, this evening, we're gonna have a quick discussion about budgets for two thousand and twenty-three. In November, I'd like to bring before you a discussion about meeting rules and some of our rules for operation that I'd like to have you take some look at and consider. With that, I'd also like to bring in December a discussion about events in two thousand and twenty-three, and the idea of as we move into two thousand and twenty-three that we have a different slate of events for the year, and talk about all the issues surrounding that. We also, I'm very excited to report, have two requests for qualifications that are currently pending and out there in the marketplace. The first is due back October the twenty-sixth regarding redesign of the township's website as well as information system services. I'd like to take a look, and you'll see, hear of during my budget discussion, about devoting some extra time and resources to that IT infrastructure as a means to increasing transparency to the public, getting information out more effectively, more efficiently, and easier for people to access. So we're looking for somebody to help redesign the website first and make sure that it is easier to access the great information that is out there. But also, I believe there are some people that will propose, and there's some great services in the marketplace about additional ways we could potentially invest in IT infrastructure that helps push out information more effectively, more efficiently, and easier for everyone to get to. So I look forward to hearing back from those proposals on October twenty-sixth. The second one will be due back November second, and that is regarding master planning feasibility analysis for the East Gate Mall Thirty-two corridor. We've discussed this previously about looking for a contractor to help us work through with the business owners at the mall, with the citizens and the, excuse me, appropriate partnership entities about what the mall could be, looking at what people want to see there, what's economically feasible, and trying to help develop a plan to move forward with, that is in everybody's best interest. So we look forward to hearing those back on November second. That's all I have this evening.
Gentlemen?
Just real quick, the Parks and Recreation Committee, it's been excellent so far. And I'll give you, gentlemen, an idea. It sounds extremely simplistic, but I think it's going to solve a lot of problems, is one of the members, one of the citizen members there suggested, you know, if there's something wrong with a piece of playground equipment that's, you know, broken off, or if there's an issue, a concern, safety hazard, how would be the best way for the residents to let us know quickly and efficiently? And, well, you can always go to the Union Township website and go through that, whatever, but why don't we have a QR code on a sign at our parks that they can just quickly, you know, like you do at a restaurant, and then takes you straight to Matt Taylor's website, and you can snap a picture of the issue or whatever it is, and describe it and send it over real quick. And that's a very, it sounds really simple, but it's like, oh, man, what a great idea. Because, I mean, we can't have eyes on everything at all times. And so, love the idea. There's a lot of other ideas they came up with as well, and I just, it's, I'm glad we formed that committee. It's, you know, it's really good. Sean, appreciate you being a part of that as well.
Thank you.
So Sean spearheaded it with me as well, and good job. Couldn't agree more. Our township website absolutely needs a complete overhaul. So I'm excited for that and looking forward to hearing more about that in the future. So excellent. So, but thank you, Ms. Ayers. That's all I got.
Just a little bit more on Mr. Dills' comments. I was chuckling a little bit, talking about taking a photo and sending that to Matt, Mr. Taylor. I've been doing that for a long time now with potholes. I'd be walking or driving, I'd get out, take, I'd take a photo of it, send it to Mr. Taylor and say, hey, you might want to have your guys take a look at this. So, and he's, and he's, he's right on top of it. He, Mr. Taylor's, he's one of the most responsive guys I've ever known. Really, really awesome.
Yeah, I got a couple of comments. I'll just follow up on the back what you said there. That's a great idea to come out of the committee. It's why I'm so excited about having that committee. Thank you for charging, leading up with that. Love, love the energy, be able to get that community feedback, what can be done. And it's funny, you give that as the example, because there's not really been an avenue to place it or have, you know, as we go with this RFP process that Ms. Ayers just spoken, speaking about, to be able to embrace technology to help us streamline operations, you know, to not just, let's say, duct tape different programs on. I did look at and really actually tested it and set it up just personally. It was a digital flow-through where you could do just that, take a picture of it, go to hyperlink, take a picture of it, describe what the problem is. It was for the mindset of potholes, and it would automatically email, like, it would automatically email like an inbox, like we could set it up for the service department. So it also takes that human element out of like Matt now has to funnel between that, but it just populates like a spreadsheet or populates the emails. So, so I love the fact that you guys are heading down that pathway, because I know we're gonna be able to get tools like that into place, which I think, you know, I see Sean shaking his head. It's like, yeah, you know, if I just got the bam bam bam, here's the work order and here's the priority, you know, it's gonna be a really good thing. It can let technology do some of the work for us.
I can't take any credit. It was one of the members of my committee.
It's phenomenal to see the committee. That's, I love that. I love that community engagement. And that's, that's where everyone comes together as community to solve problems and be picking up, you know, a positive path forward. So that's great. So thank you for sharing that. Yeah, I think Ms. Ayers, you know, to that point, too, is just excited about what the new township events can be and the feedback that we get from that. And I just want to point out, the RFP process, yeah, very excited to see, see those technology tools come on, be proposed, and be able to raise the bar in how we do transparency, accountability, and communication for the residents. And then, and we talked about kind of on the economic development front and the pledge that the board gave, that's what you're talking here with the master planning feasibility analysis for East Gate Mall. You know, to remind everyone of those that are sitting here that maybe weren't sitting here, you know, last time when we, when we had that discussion, that's East Gate Mall and Route Thirty-two corridor, which includes Old Seventy-four, Mount Carmel, that whole area. I mean, it's the Route Thirty-two corridor. If you can stand on Route Thirty-two and throw a rock at it and hit Mount Carmel, that's Mount Carmel. So, so excited of what we're going to learn as a township to engage the community and get feedback. So, and Ms. Ayers, you bring up a good point with meeting rules, as chairman position. I mean, we've got to have structure for professional and effective ran meetings, and that's in here, and that's also out there. And frankly, you know, the responsibility has to just be taken by the chairman there. I know at one point earlier in the year, an individual, anyway, had discussions out in the, out in the breezeway, and at one point, after saying that they were ready to leave, Lieutenant Brett- And at one point, after saying that they were ready to leave, Lieutenant Blankenship had to step in because they were, they were told by a party, no. And Mr. or Lieutenant Blankenship said, you know, that's unlawful, unlawfully restraining someone. And that's, that comes, you know, yeah, that's out there and that's after the meeting, but that comes back on the board here. And I want professionally ran meeting where that hostility and those actions aren't boiling over to where citizens are feeling that way out in the breezeway and that we have to have, you know, have Lieutenant Blankenship standing by just to maintain peace and order. And Chief Kavigley, we always appreciate the support and, and what your team does. So thank you. All right, well, thank you for your report, Ms. Ayers, and all great stuff. Definitely looking forward to your presentation later tonight on the operating budget and how that's a community, you know, communication tool for, for that. So, gentlemen, keep us moving. At this time, we're on the public hearings. And Mr. McCormick, if you would, present. We've got three public hearings for this evening.
Okay. First case on the agenda is, sorry, is for the property located at 4595 East Tech Drive. The applicant is McGill Smith Luntchen, and the owner is A&amp;P Real Estate Holdings, LLC. The parcel number is listed on the staff report under the nature of the request as well. And the acreage is eight and a half acres, the zoning being planned development. This is a major amendment to a planned development district parcel, basically for construction of a proposed 29,700 square foot addition to the existing 77,149 square foot building that's on the site for office and light manufacturing. Item, well, they, under nature of request, we also refer to the applicant's statements, plans, and other application enclosures. I want to point out before I get into the report and slide presentation, which are meant to kind of go together hand in hand, that we did get all the staff reports and all the planning documents online about 10 days ago. And when we, we, we do try to work with the applicants to get the initial report together, and then we try to get any outstanding information prior to the meeting so we can update the report, hopefully shorten the report, address any issues, or, or at least eliminate as many as we can. And so there were some changes to the, when they were initially posted and sent to the board and online versus what you have seen the last couple of days. So the location of the property is on the west side of East Tech Drive and the East Gate Technical Center Phase Two, approximately 500 feet north of the intersection of Old State Road 74. You can see it on this particular slide here with the arrow, and then the site is outlined in red. The existing zoning, the project again is zone PD, was originally zoned PD in 1985. In November of 1988, the formal plan was approved, and it was updated in 1991 to resemble most closely what's there now. And what is on the plan in 1991 is very similar to what is being proposed now. The only main difference is the size of the building is slightly different as far as the main structure, and the setback is within 10 feet of the plan 1991. And on this slide, you can also see not only the zoning of the property, but the adjacent properties. So you have some residential to the west and to the north, PD for the most part around us to the south, where that is Business B1. And the proposed addition primarily, I'll show you here in a minute, abuts one residential property owner and the social club, which is to the immediate south. So for major amendments for planned developments, there are a couple sections of code that we want to refer you to. Section 680 is the purpose of the PD districts, which is to provide sites for business, mixed business residential developments in appropriate locations with the existing potential land uses and to provide an attractive setting for developments, harmonious developments and land uses. Section 682, land use for any PD property shall be consistent with the use design details outlined in the approved PD plan for that property and any conditions of approval. Other applicable regulations from this resolution, such as nuisance, nuisance regulations also apply to PD property. And then pursuant to the approved plans, allowed uses may include those in B1 and M1 districts or substantially similar uses determined by the zoning commissioner or board of trustees. These are the sections 684, number one, all site plan elements, a reference to what needs to be included in terms of the submittal. 684.3, the landscaping plan. 685, number two, property developed in accordance with the PD plan, plan shall remain forever in effect. And those PDs shall basically be the regulations that govern the use of the property, subject to any, of course, future zoning decisions, amendments. 685, number three, a part of the approved PD plan, including PD concept design or formal plans that are prior regulations for which development is not completed within five years of the date of the board of trustees' approval shall expire. That part of the property shall remain zoned PD. However, no development shall occur or continue until a new plan is approved for the part of the property or the property is otherwise rezoned. And then 686.4 gets kind of more to the meat of what we're here to do. The board of trustees shall consider the amendment and adopt a motion approving, denying, or modifying the amended plan. Prior to entering the final decision, the board of trustees may direct that further data be provided if necessary to make an informed decision. And as a part of that process, the board should make appropriate findings of fact to support whatever decision is reached. This is the site with topography. It's a pretty level site until you get to the back where this proposed addition is. There is a large swale there, and I think that that's really more to convey to the detention basins to the north of the site that you'll see in the pictures that we took here in a few minutes. I'll pause here for a second. The, on the relationship of the comprehensive plan, the 2030 land use plan indicates the proposals within the Old 74 Summerside Willowville mixed use corridor, which is a very diverse, from a land use and development perspective, and has seen increased development in recent years. Old State Road 74 is a minor arterial collector, I'm sorry, arterial two-lane roadway with a traffic volume of approximately 10,068 vehicles a day in the area of the East Tech Drive intersection, where the traffic signal was installed between 2015 and 16. Additional improvements have been made to Old 74 to address connectivity and congestion issues and eliminate at-grade crossings with State Road 32 and to widen, widen the roadway in targeted locations to accommodate increased capacity demands. Previous comprehensive plan also, or current comprehensive plan also called for limited commercial expansion alteration along the corridor, as long as certain objectives, conditions, and circumstances were met. Among other things, the plan calls for site development to be conducted in a manner that focuses on land use efficiency with infill development, implementation of noise and/or light pollution reduction strategies wherever practical. For commercial development redevelopment, the use of traditional building materials, adequate vegetative buffering and landscaping strategies along shared property lines and landscaping enhancements along corridor fringes required. So those are the things that we're, we're looking at for this project, those particular items. And, you know, this isn't an infill development with the addition. East Tech Drive PD was approved in 1988, as I mentioned earlier, with several successive parcels developed in the early 1990s. This development area accommodates primary light industrial uses to the north and northeast of Station 49 and the fire department. Current property was approved in its current configuration approximately 20 years ago as the former Civic Con complex and is now home to A&amp;P Technologies, which is a successful grading and composite manufacturers and two other business uses. The most recent improvement on the property was the construction of a 60 by 96 auxiliary storage building, which was a minor amendment to the PD and was administered by staff in So the proposal here, you can see the proposed addition. It is this area here that I'm trying to circle. And you can see the, the proposed grade changes here, and that's essentially to level the site. And the, there is a considerable amount of existing vegetation along the property line. I, I wouldn't necessarily call it high-quality vegetation. A lot of people would probably describe it as scrubby. A lot, all that's going to have to be cleared to the property line. There, there's, in order for this project to move forward, with the building being this size, the proposed building is, proposed to be 20 feet off the property line. And then approximately halfway from the proposed building to the neighboring property line, there's a retaining wall proposed, or there would be a fence, privacy fence, and then what is now evergreens and semi-evergreens proposed for landscaping, which was an updated portion to the report in the last couple of days. Overall, the proposed PD amendment appears to be consistent with the original intent of the East Tech Commerce PD approval. The current expansion was contemplated essentially during the original proposal, just a difference of 10 feet in the rear property line. And the, otherwise, the primary uses have been consistent for over 20 years. The site appears to have ample parking. Circulation has been well-designed and coordinated with previous planned expansions. The combined developed square footage of the all existing proposed structure does exceed the 35% building lot area requirement by 7.6%. However, a waiver is permissible in this instance due to the larger size of the property and the heavy, heavily commercialized and industrialized nature of the area. The applicant has agreed and has updated their plans to enhance the initial proposed landscaping plan by replacing the deciduous trees and shrubs that were originally shown with something that can, can be there year-round. And that was actually something that we, we discussed prior to the letters that we sent out to the adjacent property owners. And we ended up meeting with the neighbor that adjoins the site and that would affect, be affected the most. And I'll, I'll talk about that here in a moment, where we're at with that. This is the, these are the elevations that are part of the plan at the moment. This is the oblique, kind of three-dimensional imagery. Again, the site is here behind the, the main building. This blue roof building, it was the building that was approved administratively in 2018. This is the area that is being cleared up into the neighbor's property line. The neighbor has a fence that is approximately three to four feet off the property line on the southern portion of the property. And as you get closer to this newer building, the fence ends up more or less on the property line. We, I met with the neighbor and two representatives of A&amp;P probably about a week, week and a half ago to discuss her main concerns. Her main concern was that she did not want anyone to clear anything on her property. She did not want anyone, even if it was, you know, dead or, or bad vegetation, or to trespass on her property. And the A&amp;P representatives have agreed to make sure that if the project moves forward, they will thoroughly mark the property and try to make sure there are no issues in that regard. And that was her main concern. Of course, she was, you know, concerned about the expansion, but she's a business owner herself, and she was understanding of the fact that, you know, businesses sometimes have to grow to thrive. This is, if you're standing at the edge of the, the building looking south towards the southern property line, the, the neighbor we met with there is on the right. This is if you walk closer to that property line, you can kind of, that's not the edge of the building necessarily there where those stakes are. It might be that the applicant may be able to attest to that when they're here to speak. But that's the vegetation essentially to the right that would be cleared to the neighboring property line or close to the neighboring property line. And then that area would be leveled, so there, there would be a consistent level in the building as it expands. And then this is the area where, where the back half of the property, where you would see the retaining wall put in and the privacy fence and the evergreens, semi-evergreens. This is if you're looking straight west through the property, the, you can kind of see the buildings that are there on the neighboring property and part of the fence, which has slats in it. This is if you're look, basically turned, looking west from essentially the two A&amp;P buildings. The main building would be on your left in this picture. The new building is on your right. So you can see what the new building looks like there a little bit. That's looking directly at the most impacted property owner. This is looking, if you're rotating to your right, along the rear of the property, towards the detention basin, which is what you see right here. And as part of that process, we have asked the applicant to evaluate the proposal as it pertains to stormwater management on the property to make sure that that stormwater management is adequate as far, in terms of the facility that's there for detention. And there's the basin that's there on the property for everything. This is looking east, essentially from the same area I was taking pictures earlier in the very beginning, more towards East Tech Drive. And this is if you rotate it slightly from the left in that same position. What's there, the new building is there on the left. And this is the property line to the south that adjoins the multifamily complex as well as the social club, to get an idea of what that looks like, that property line. So the, I already went over earlier in the staff report, the actions required for the, as far as a motion to approve, approve or modification or deny the applicant's request. The recommended modifications that are left are noted herein, which would be to address any concerns that may come from a related other agency as far as the stormwater detention basin, management system that's there. The proposed semi-evergreens and evergreens need to be approved and be the required planting height and size. At this point in time, it's, what has been submitted is substantially different and better than the original plan. And we have that the landscaping buffer would need to be marked as a preservation area, if not have an easement there. And then lighting, if proposed along the western property line. The back of the building would be limited to wall pack lining with downward directed light and be of sufficient intensity to eliminate without projecting onto the adjoining neighbor, residential property. Any, any questions on my report? Any slides you would like me to go back to?
Gentlemen?
No, not this time?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCormick. Mark, so first off, good, good job on sending the letters out to the adjacent neighbors. And you said only one resident came forward with concerns, and they met with, with the company and yourself?
Yes.
Perfect. Good. And lastly, I think you described it as scrubby?
That was my.
Don't steal that word.
Yes. Yeah, actually, I think one of the other people described, I think she might have even described it as scrubby.
Fair enough, yeah. Yeah. Appreciate you very much, Mark. Thank you.
All right. At this time, we'll open to the public for the public hearing. Is there anyone here that's a proponent? Please rise.
I'm representing.
Okay. If you're proponent, yeah. Please give your name and your address, and I'll swear you in, because this is a.
Hi, I'm Sergeant John Teague, retired disabled veteran. I live to one of the adjacent properties next to East Tech A&amp;P property. Back in 2013.
First, can I get your property address, and I'll swear in. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God?
So help me God, I swear to tell the truth.
Thank you. And can you give your property address?
My property address is 4610 Ed Willow Drive, San Jose, Ohio 45345.
Thank you. Okay, please.
Okay. Back in 2013, I believe, I, I'm a disability, some service connection with the war. East Tech did a big expansion. They built a building right, right next to my house. An easement is still questioned as if it is even right. I'm going to have to probably pay for a survey, the double check stuff to see even, see if they're even filled on my land. One known big fact that I know within engineering and studying from within the military, that if they're going to build buildings that big, what are they going to do with the water when they put all the concrete there? I spoke to Scott about problems within my own property, and I asked about pouring concrete, just to maybe build a carpool. Scott told me straight up that you cannot pour concrete like that. You have to use a driveway, making it out blacktop. Now, the one factor that I do know why I asked that question was out of the matter of the fact that when you put that much concrete down, it just covers the water table, the ground saturates, it eliminates the water. Behind my property, where I have a swimming pool currently, that's been built there since 1970s, the property's had a well there. There's an aquifer that stretched right across my property all the way into what was Iris Masters' property and into East Tech. The streamline within their property was allowing the property to drain properly, and it was not even close to a stream. They ended up putting a bunch of creek rock in in between our properties to call that an easement. And then later on, went down the road to the side and put in, put in a fence, a privacy fence. The water that's consistently pouring after rainforet after rainforet is coming down my property. property into the Brickman's property where they decided to actually put a tunnel after I showed them pictures, I showed them property damages. It's, I live on a cost of living assessment. I don't make great money. I'm a disabled vet. I served in Iraq, I, I served in Operation Iraqi Freedom. I'm a part of the unit that's got the most captures on the global, global war on terrorism. I've, I'm a Purple Heart veteran. I've dedicated my life, my service to my country. I was married, my property was beautiful. I have pictures of before and after. And the property's been water damaged all the way through. It's drove my whole family to not even want to be around. No matter what I do, no matter how hard I dedicate my life to it, it's not even home anymore. I think that I really want a more further examination of what East Tech is intending to do. I'd like to show the neighboring adjacent property of what's going to happen there. I'd like to tell them what can be the collateral damage of what is before and after. Because the way I see it, when I got advertised a property from Chuck Charles, the property was supposed to be .73 acres. When I look up the property, when I look up the property within Clermont County Otter Site, I see the Otter Site depicts that it's like .67 acres. On top of that, when I measure out the perimeter of the property, which was originally, the, the survey was originally done by the plot like Charles Ellsworth Lang, who was the original owner of my property, who built the whole Ramona community, he was an engineer for the Cincinnati area for residential construction. The homes were designed off of California modern, uh, modern dot style living in the 1950s. And from what I do know, that Ellsworth had the biggest property and now it's not looking like it's even the biggest property. The property that's closest to the school, Summerside Elementary, is actually looking like it's a bigger property. So I do know within law, as of looking stuff up, that surveys can be done up to 23 years since that building was built alone and even on depicting that they continue advancements, saying that they continue going. And I do know that by collateral lawsuit that would entitle me to sue within the ROI of the company from the original builder. That's really all I have to say. I'm hoping that whatever they do, they can try to come up with a good number, maybe buy me out and maybe think about how they're doing to all the people in the community. I honestly think with the water coming down really, that they need to start thinking about actually doing sewage like the way they do in downtown Cincinnati. How they do a French drain completely in ground and run it all the way down on 174. The excess water is creating flood damage and it's forcing homeowners to even have to consider flood insurance. We're not that close to the river.
Thank you for your comment, thank you for your time. Thank you for your service to the country, the Purple Heart and service disabled veteran. Appreciate your service. Got a couple of service members up here and families that serve, so we appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. You have a good night.
Sir, can you tell me your, your name again?
Sergeant John Fugate.
Say your last name again?
Fugate.
Fugate?
That's F as in foxtrot, E as in echo, U as in uniforms, U as in golf, A as in outlets, U as in tango, E as in echo. My whole family served in the military. All my brothers besides war and he was born with the terminal disabilities and he was limited. I'm from a hardcore military family and we've done the best we could to provide for this community and provide within this whole city. I've lived up and down Cincinnati and in Kansas far as be so high as it happens because I've had, I've been ran out. I take my stance because as a, I was a kid, I had my house burned down. I will, I refuse to have a hostile takeover in such manner.
Thank you for, thank you for comments tonight, Sergeant Fugate. Appreciate it. All right, this time, is there proponent testimony for the public hearing tonight? Anyone that's for the public hearing? Any opponent for the public hearing? You're representing, please. You're a proponent.
Well, I'm the applicant, so...
You're the applicant. You're, you're positively supporting him. If you could please state your name and your address for the record and I'll swear you in.
My name is Randall Merrill. Um, my address is 6211 Tanglewood Drive, Lebanon, Ohio.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Oh my God.
All right, thank you very much. We need that for the, for the meeting minutes. Thank you.
I'm not sure what else I need to say other than what Mr. McCormick has said. The things that you've asked for, we certainly would not do anything without having the proper stormwater detention approved by the county. We have, on and off setbacks. I don't know what else you, you need from us. I'm here to answer questions if you need it. Landscaping has been changed. I think, like you said, the vegetation is there, it'll be probably a betterment to what's there now. Our client wants to be a good neighbor.
Okay.
So is there any questions that you would like to ask me? We're happy to answer them.
You, you hit the first one, which was, so this is the, the recommended modifications, item number one, as to address the concerns, any concerns with county engineering, Clermont County Water and Sewer District, Clermont County Building Department and U Township Fire or any other regulatory agencies. So from what I just heard from the neighbor, that is, that encompasses water and sewer district for storm runoff of any water that's displaced to make sure that there is the proper detention and that it's, because it's obviously, we know it's illegal to run water onto other properties, so that's why we have the relation in place.
The county wouldn't give us a permit unless we did that.
Then you're aware of the other recommendations, items two and three? Applicant needs to replace the deciduous trees and shrubs on the initial landscaping plan submitted with evergreens of required height and size. Additionally, landscaping buffer along the property line should be marked as preservation area and any prepped vegetation or shrubs should be repaired, subplan, supplemented or replaced. This is item that can be addressed administratively by staff. And then item three, lighting, it's proposed along the western property line should be limited to wall pack lighting downward directed and of sufficient intensity to eliminate without projecting onto the adjoining residential property. You read this?
On both cases, yes.
Gentlemen, do you have anything further? This time, I'll see if there's any other public comment and then I can close that and open up for board comments.
No, no, I don't.
Yeah, please.
So you heard the, the testimony of the, the resident that spoke before you. Is tonight the first time you're hearing of any of this?
I have not heard this yet, no.
Okay. I, same, same with me, so this is, this is also news to me, but I am concerned about it. Can, can you or someone in the organization work with the resident to understand what his concerns or the issues are and hopefully get that resolved?
I'm sure we can. Again, I'm not sure exactly what parcel he's referring to. The only neighbor I know that we're impacting, we've already talked to, we are going to retain properly the, and distribute the stormwater that comes off of our property, detain it and let it drain in its appropriate rate that is not going to cause an issue. Now, if there's other adjustments that have made other than what we're trying to do, I don't know about it. We'd certainly like to make sure that the county has reviewed and approved our stormwater management plan. And we would certainly not put any, any undue pressure on our neighbors.
Yeah, I just, I'd just like to see either you or somebody from A and P, you know, to, to work with the resident to, just to see if these issues can be resolved.
Ms. Ayers.
Mr. Becker, if I may, Mr., or Fugate, sorry, Sergeant Fugate, I'm part of, this is the first time I've heard that testimony as well. And I'd be happy as a staff to reach out and see if we can potentially get him connected with the proper Butler, or to meet Clermont County authorities that handles the water and the drainage in that area so that we can see if there's additional things that need to be addressed.
That's well...
Yeah, it sounds like there may have been some issues on the East Tech construction that maybe aren't directly related to this, but perhaps we can help intervene and discuss the matter with Clermont County.
That'd be great. Yeah, thank you. I think it sounds like that's some, some longstanding issues as well, so, okay, thank you. Any further?
No, so I got it.
All right, thank you, sir. Does anyone else have testimony for this public hearing? Okay, at this time, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll open it to board comments, Mr. Dills, Mr. Becker. What we are being asked to do tonight is with, in accordance with, seeking a motion in accordance with section 68 through 687 zoning resolution to approve, approve with sought modification or deny applicant's request to approve major amendment to an approved PD plan development district to build the 29,700 square foot addition to the existing 77,149 square foot building that's being submitted. So that's the motion that's being sought. We've got the three recommendations. The applicant is aware of the three recommendations. I know staff is working to be able to intervene on behalf of what may be some historical or prior water runoff conditions and issues there, work with soil and water development. And Mr. McCormick did a very thorough presentation, so thank you. So, board members, I'll open up for any comments for you.
We need a motion a second first.
Yeah, we can take the motion. So moved?
Second.
We'll open that comment. Thank you.
Yeah, so I'll start. So Sergeant Fugate, well, he's, he's talking, but I, first off, Sergeant, you, I hear it in your voice, you're a proud patriot veteran, you're Purple Heart, God bless you, brother, and thank you for your service. And I, I do, correct me if I'm wrong, is it the county that would be responsible if there's a water runoff issue? Am I correct when I say that?
Yes.
Correct, okay. So Sergeant, I want you to get with Susan right here, and she's going to get your information before, before, after we're done, so before you leave. And, and we'll, we'll get you with the right people to see what's going on and how we can help, okay? And, and so, so the question is, is this build happens and what happens in, so the county does all the surveying for the water, correct? So even if a few years from now, if there is an issue, it would be the county, correct? Okay, okay. But I just want to make sure you know that and, and it didn't fall on deaf ears, even if it's not directly our, the township's, you know, direct issue, we're, we're going to get you with the right people and try to help you with the water runoff issue and get your land back to where it should be. So I just want you to know, we hear you loud and clear, and Ms. Ayers is going to help you with that, okay? So just so you know that. But I do think it's great that you guys are expanding and you're, you have confidence in our township and our county and, and so I appreciate you. Business is good, so I'm, I'm proud of you guys. So appreciate you being in business here. That's all I got, Joe.
Mr. Becker?
Yeah, so yeah, ditto's to everything Mr. Dills just said. I walked around the, the facility, I, you know, behind is a, I, I'll use the word thicket, it's a, quite an impressive, a natural barrier, so it's good to hear that's, that's going to stay intact. Otherwise, other than the concerns we heard from the resident tonight, I'm okay with the project.
Yeah, and just kind of follow up to both trustees, Becker, trustee Dills, and I think trustee Dills, what you're really leaning into with Sergeant Fugate on that as well, it's the, you know, Clermont County Water and Soil and that authority. We actually as a board are kind of limited in our scope. The question that's being asked of us right now is, does this fit the zoning requirements for the type of expansion that it is? And if that's a yes, that it is, we, yes, yes, we're charged with the zoning resolution 68 through 687 to say approve, approve with modification or deny, but we can't deny that for reasons that are outside of the zoning resolution. So if it's, if it comes down to, you know, the, the additional recommendations or if it's, you know, street curve, if it's landscaping, it's some of those tangible, if it's facade, those are things that we're able, that are written right now currently into the zoning resolution that we're able to either approve, approve with modification or deny. Unfortunately, if it's outside of those bounds, basically, what we do is we open the township up to unsuccessful litigation over the, over, over basically an improper zoning action. And so, if I'm summarizing that all right, Mr. McCormick, but that's, you know, that's something that we're charged with, so in one sense, our scope is limited, we're not able to be, you know, we, we put the recommendation on that they have to work with the Clermont County Water and Sewer District, so just to clarify that, but that's not something that we regulate and we control. So with that, gentlemen, if there's, closes discussion?
Roll call.
Yeah, we can close it for roll call.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Lo?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. All right, Mr. McCormick, if you can move on with the next zoning case, please.
Okay, the next request is for property at 4412 Mount Carmel Tabasco Road. The owner is a company called 4412 4414 Mount Carmel LLC. The owner actually owns the site and also the property to the immediate north. The parcel is identified here on the slide, it's .966 acres. It's zone PD. And the applicant is wishing to establish a medical marijuana dispensary that's approximately 4,480 square feet on the property. We have been referenced on the staff report, the applicant's statements, plans and their enclosures. This staff report, like the other staff reports, were posted online about a week and a half ago and was updated at some point when we received updated information a few days after we originally had them posted. I will note, before I get too far in the presentation, I did receive one phone call and that was from the property owner to the south. And you'll see, and you can see on this slide, there's an area that they use this property for accessing that site, which I believe is a catering business, and it's a site owned by the Kleffers. And she may be in attendance tonight, she indicated she may be, but that is the only person I have heard from and we've received no written comments, at least to me or was iterated to me yet at this point. The subject property is approximately 150 feet north of the Harrison Lane intersection on Mount Tabasco Road on the east side. The remainder piece to the south actually used to be part of a railroad, that's why there's kind of an odd configuration there. Really have to go fairly far back to be able to see that. The property was zoned, has been zoned PD since 1995. It was originally B7 in 1986 in February. And in 1995, the township decided to eliminate all of the B7 districts and I think may, perhaps all the business districts besides the B1. And this property was reclassified as PD in 1995. Not, I can't do anything but speculate as to the reasons why, but I can tell you there was a plan in place when there was a B7 request and that the plan that was in place acknowledges the types of uses that were being sought. And among the uses that were being sought in that timeframe, there were medical offices and pharmacies, I think listed there, and general retail. So from, from the perspective of the proposed use, even though the medical marijuana dispensaries were not a thought back then, the proposed use is, if you're going to place it in the code somewhere, that would probably be the place that you would put it as far as the zoning resolution, but it is not articulated in there specifically. The zoning on the property, again, it's PD, to the immediate north, it's industrial, and then there is a piece to the north that's business and then there's another industrial area. To the south, there's a PD property that was actually included as part of that original rezone in 1986. Across the road there, there's property zone residential, R1, and the most eastward point there, the very tip point there is R2. As far as the comprehensive plan, it indicates the proposal is located within the Mount Carmel Tabasco mixed use corridor. Currently, the northern portion of the corridor contains a variety of commercial, plaza, institutional uses varying and varying residential uses. Limited development, redevelopment have occurred in some areas of the corridor since the adoption of the plan. Mount Carmel Tabasco Road is a minor arterial two lane roadway with a traffic volume of approximately 10,200 average daily trips in this area. We have significant resident, residential populations located in and around this area with a lack of sidewalks resulting in safety issues for those seeking alternative modes of transportation. Among other thing, the plan, things, the plan calls for sidewalks in this area, the use of criss, cross easements and consolidated shared driveway configurations whenever practical site development to be conducted in a manner that focuses on land use efficiency with infill development. For commercial development or conversions, the use of traditional building materials, adequate vegetation buffering and landscaping strategies along shared property lines and landscaping enhancements along corridor fringes required. I went over the background a little bit already, and again, those, those uses that were listed there were, are listed under background, retail, wholesale, sales, prescription pharmacy, office facilities, including financial institutions, professional... facilities, including financial institutions, professional offices, real estate, animal hospital, vet clinic, and other retail wholesale businesses which are deemed to be of the same general character. So again, I already went over the, the way we would try to sort it as far as those considerations and those in the zoning resolution. The case originally referenced there was number eight ninety-five Z, as far as when that township amended the zoning, that of course, upon the case number one dash ninety-three T, and that's when the B seven areas were changed to PD, or at least this particular B seven was changed to PD. The old, approximately five thousand four hundred square foot commercial multi-use structure on the property was destroyed by fire well over ten years ago, I'm not sure the exact date. I believe we may have someone who might have the answer to that, because I think the fire chief had indicated he was aware of when that happened and lives roughly in that area. The house on the property was demolished between two thousand nineteen and twenty, and since two thousand twenty, the property appears to be vacant. I'm going to pause there. So six, section six eighty, this is really a reiteration of what we, we saw earlier as far as the purpose of the PDs, to provide sites for business mixed uses at appropriate locations in relation to the existing potential land uses and attractive setting for developments and harmonious developments. And section six eighty-two, land use for any property in the PD district should be consistent with the use design details contained in the approved PD plan for that property. Again, we have a plan for that property that was submitted when it was zoned B seven, and the allowable uses for PD can be those in the B one and M one districts. So again, the use, as far as what's being proposed in general, is where it would fit without being specifically referenced for medical marijuana dispensaries, but the general use itself would be listed in, in those areas. Six eighty-four, number one, site plan information in terms of what's required is referenced there, cross-references section eleven thirty-one. Six eighty-four, number three, the landscaping plan to be included is referenced. Six eighty-five, number two, again, the, the PD plans, once those are in effect, are forever in effect unless there is basically a, a future amendment or rezone process. And then if it's over five years old, six eighty-five three A, then the, there's an expiration period, but that can be lifted or can be changed through the trustees when they would review another development proposal. And for tonight, the action that we're looking for, we have section six eighty to six eighty-seven in terms of zoning, zoning resolution, but section six eighty-six, number four, board trustees shall consider the amendment and adopt the motion approving, denying, or modifying the amended plan. In prior training to reading a final decision, the board of trustees may direct that further data be provided if necessary to make an informed decision. The board should make appropriate findings of fact as part of that decision-making process. As far as the other background information or staff review and analysis, so the proposed project would, would provide the infill development, as mentioned in the comprehensive plan. The property's been largely underutilized in the last twenty years or so. The proposed use was not exactly referenced, as I mentioned, in nineteen eighty-two, it does exist at that time, but it is very similar to what, what I've mentioned here as far as how we would classify it in the B one and M one areas and PD. The proposed architectural materials and features, landscaping and provision of much-needed sidewalk along the frontage all appear to meet the land use plan's requirements, and I'll show you that here in a moment, and the proposed setbacks will be met, and there are no concerns at this time with proposed lighting or preliminary signage info. So this is the site right now. The main reason why this is in here this evening is because, as I understand it, the applicant originally was going to build on the parcel to the north, which is also owned by the same owner, and as they submitted information to the state, they listed the wrong parcel number, and as a result, they are proposing to put this facility on this piece. Had they kept it on the original piece, there, we would have not had a public hearing for it, it would have been dealt with administratively. So that is another thing to consider. We, we do have another facility that's already almost completed, as I understand it, on Old Seventy-four, that was done administratively as well. This is looking north with the oblique of that area. This is the proposed plan, and I believe this is the, I think I updated all these to be the most recent plans. And there's the proposed landscaping. A lot more landscaping than a lot of the businesses that, that are in that area. These are the elevations of, of the building, and we were sent several pictures like this of what it would look like. We actually received some pictures of, of the loading area that shows that it's, the facility looks very much like this in real life. These are the photos that staff took. This is looking north from the Klepper entrance. This area here is the area then of the staff recommendations. We're looking to make sure that there's an easement for that, for that access to remain, and in talking to Mrs. Klepper, that was probably her main concern, that we talked about at the time. Property's there on the right. This is looking north on the road, the site's on the right, you can see kind of like the little additional pavement there on the right that is probably close to the proposed entrance area that will have to be approved by the county. This is looking further up Mount Tabasco Road to the north, towards the southeast, you can see the catering business there on the right and the property line to the north on the left. I think that's both lots there. This is looking east, if you're standing kind of in the middle of the site, you can see what is left of the destroyed buildings there. There's a mound of concrete and dirt, and who knows what else there that's there on your right. This is looking southeast, if you kind of rotate, it's right there towards the catering business location, the Klepper property. And this is if you rotated more to the right to look more at Mount Tabasco Road. Again, you can still see the Klepper property there and what's across the site, and this is looking west directly across the site of what's there. This is looking from northwest on the left to the north. And the recommended modifications, again, you know, if there are any concerns from the county engineer about access, or concerns about water and sewer provision, or anything that, that has to do with the detention easement, or detention basin that's proposed to serve both this site and site to the north, that would need to be potentially addressed subsequently. The applicant was asked to provide some information regarding traffic, and they, they did end up providing that information. I think we wanted to just get some finalized peak and average daily volumes to make sure that the final access of parking determinations were adequate for that site. We're looking for potentially an easement there to allow the existing business use to the south to remain, that, that access to remain in use, which was something that when we, when I talked to the engineer, it seemed feasible. Create a shared easement to the proposed detention basin, that would be shared between those two properties, as mentioned, and then the signage would be limited to something capped at a ten-foot height, and we have not received the full set of signage proposed for the site at this point. Any questions for me?
I don't think so. Thank you, Mr. McCormick. At this time, we'll open, open the public hearing for public comment. Are there any proponents, proponents of the testimony? Mr. Hartman, and then, you ready?
Pardon my interruption, my wife checking on me, and I haven't been home for dinner yet. My name is Carl Hartman. I reside at three four seven eight Hollywood Ridge Drive, Cincinnati, Ohio, four five two four five.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God?
So help me God, I do.
Wonderful, thank you.
Well, thank you. First of all, I think I would be remiss if I didn't thank Chief Diamond and his team. They have personally showed me professionalism and quick response to me and my family on multiple occasions, and I wish to thank you, and my, my wife and children thank you also for that. Okay, tonight, let's get into a little bit of the history. If you could have the site planned up, please? Thank you, Mark. The area on the back that goes through there is the old CGMP Railroad. I don't, it was a part of the interurban railroad that went through. Harrison Lane across the street was the extension of that, went down, crossed Clough Pike, just about the county line. So that's part of the old CGMP Railroad that went up through Amelia and all the way up through there. And so it's kind of interesting, we haven't searched for any relics in there, but there might be some old railroad spikes or something else there. But let's talk about the history. This site here was the home for W.J. Needle's Plumbing Company for decades. Bill was a personal friend of mine. We were close, we, I lived in his farmhouse out in Judd Road for a year or so, and we went to conventions together, and we enjoyed a Friday night beverage once in a while in that regard. So, Bill, but, you know, and I actually, my firm, I had private practice in nineteen eighty-two, prepared the zoning change that went through in nineteen eighty-two. The plan that we had at that time was a very, very conceptual plan. No detail, nothing you see normally on a plan, development plan. I guess unilaterally, in nineteen, during the nineteen nineties, the township changed the zoning. Originally, when this property was zoned to R seven, R seven at that time eliminated multifamily from the zoning. The business one, two, and three at that time allowed multifamily, so that the other designations in the business changed it so that they did not have that, excluded multifamily. And so, you know, I, I think that if we, we, I don't fully understand how we changed this from B seven to a Plan Development One without a full development plan, and I think it was unilaterally done. I'd like to introduce our team tonight. We have representing Standard Wellness, Katie Hart. Katie, Standard Wellness has a contract to purchase this property, and has a contract to purchase, it has an equity interest in the property. We have sitting next to her, the Troutmans. The Troutmans are represented by their LLC. Sitting in behind Katie is Greg Snyder, who is the architect for this project. To his right, yes, is Dolores and Larry Keith. Larry is, and Dolores are here to speak tonight to address the, what they feel has been the benefits of the products dispensed at this store. Larry and I have worked together on several things, he's an architect himself. One of the projects that we've worked on was the Perry Kelly Plumbing building up the street, and that was, it's a nice addition to the township. At this point in time, I guess Katie, you want to go first, or?
Sure.
All right. Katie will come up here, and then we'll have the rest of our team contribute. And I'd like to have some time maybe after the end to respond to anything that's on. Thank you.
Please state your name and record for the, your name and address for the record.
Katie Hart, two five five zero Detroit Avenue.
Raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God?
I do.
Thank you.
Not a ton to say about the zoning aspects of it, but we as a company, The Forest, we're very excited to be a part of the Union Township. We are an Ohio-based company. We currently exist in Sandusky, Fitchamberg, and Springfield, and we are welcomed and supportive participants of the communities that we exist in. We support parades, sponsor parades, sponsor events, health-based focus. We're very educational-based, so really happy to be here, looking forward to starting to build. Hopefully, we can get past some of this administrative portions of this. We are currently engaging local contractors to do the work. We look forward to supporting the community here and ultimately serving patients of Ohio.
Thank you, Katie.
And happy to answer any questions at the end.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Larry Keith, forty-seven seventy-five Berksall Road, Williamsburg, Ohio.
Raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God?
I do.
Thank you.
As Carl mentioned, I'm an architect, resident of Claremont County, but I'm not here to talk to you about the project I'm working on, I'm here to encourage you to approve the case before you. My wife and I have been medical marijuana cardholders for about two years now. We both suffer from what I call elderly maladies, like arthritis, sleep disorders, things of that nature. We were both taking prescription drugs and over-the-counter drugs, all with, most with harmful side effects. We kept saying to ourselves, there's got to be something better out there, there's something different that, that we can do. Several years ago, we started experimenting with CBD oil. It, we had, we had moderate success with it, and it was readily available at jungle gyms here in Eastgate, over the counter. Then, medical marijuana was legalized, and I got to tell you, it's been a godsend for both of us. Safe, effective, no harmful side effects, no addiction, if used properly. Currently, we have to travel to, to Madisonville area to buy our products. Hamilton County is a long way. We'd much rather travel to and spend our money in Union Township. So again, I encourage you to approve the case before you. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you.
Greg, you want to say anything? We got the architect back there, the project architect, he's the one that came up with all those pretty pictures, and, and you note that. Thank you, Greg.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, Greg Snyder, Lardier Group Architects, four thirty-one Hillcrest Drive, Cincinnati, Ohio, four five two one five.
You raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God?
I do.
Thank you.
All right, as a, originally from Claremont County, it's good to do some projects here where I grew up. Matter of fact, my grandma lived about a mile from here, Mount Carmel, so very familiar with the area, and obviously happy to be part of a project that I think would be of benefit to a lot of people. So, Mr. McCormick, if you could pull up the elevations, please, and let us talk a little bit about the building. The building itself, fibers in that building, kind of a contemporary design. You'll notice on the rear, there is a little enclosed area, that's actually an exterior area for delivery. It's a secure delivery area, product, and we'll go in and the garage door will come down, and probably will be moved into the facility from there. The building itself is very secure, think of it not unlike a bank or a facility. There's a vault inside, I won't go into the details of that in a public forum, but there is also secured access from the waiting area to the retail portion of it. So conceptually, you can kind of think of this almost as a, kind of a hybrid between a, a retail space, almost like a, a jewelry sales room, combined with a bank, with the Bag of Hells vault, and the level of security that are going in here, and, and just a, a normal business, a pharmaceutical-type business. So, very secure facility, I know that's probably what a lot of people want to talk about when we talk about dispensary in a local community. So all this is tied into a monitored security system. The facility on the exterior has adequate site lighting, always lighting the facades of the building, so there's no unintended access or people hanging, hanging around in the shadows there. We've also provided all the required landscaping to try to make this a, a positive presence in the neighborhood. Again, we already spoke to sidewalks and retention, so just wanted to bring up some of the facts about the building itself, which may not be readily apparent on a site plan, and I'm also open to answer any questions about the facility itself. I cannot speak to all the operations of the facility, I defer to Katie on that one, but I can't answer any questions about the landscape wide and the building itself. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. On the report, or on the staff report, and Mark did that, there's five items in the recommendations. We find that all those five recommendations, we can resolve those. We find that all those, uh, five recommendations, we can resolve those and we would like to have the ability to, uh, resolve those with staff. We think that, you know, the sign, like the sign was shown on the one drawing is obviously less than ten feet. We can add a note, but we can handle that. Uh, you know, and I'm probably one of the older people here in attendance tonight, but I had my own engineering practice here in Union Township, started in October nineteen seventy. And so I went through a lot of the stages and saw a lot of these zoning things. And actually, I prepared the plan, our, my firm prepared the plan in nineteen eighty-two, the very concept, concept plan, uh, that went, changed it to B seven. Um, if it had still been B seven, we wouldn't need it to be here tonight. But, uh, so therefore, like I said, we can find that the recommendations, we can work that out with staff and we think that, uh, we hope you agree and can support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hurman. This time, is there any other proponent testimony for the public hearing? Yes, sir. If you could please state your name and address for the record.
It's David Haas, forty-four thirteen Mount Carmel, Colorado.
Raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Okay, thank you.
I own a house straight across the street from this area. I can almost guarantee that if they bring this thing, you're going to lose probably almost every neighbor there. There's enough drugs in Clermont County, especially in that area. We don't want it. You know, I don't want it. I know I'll move and sell my house. Um, it's going to bring more trouble than we need there. There's already a million cars come up and down there ninety miles an hour. So we're going to have more traffic. We're going to have people that we don't want to be hanging around there. And yes, you can just secure it all you want, but banks are secured. They get robbed all the time. What's it going to say, someone's not going to try to rob this place because there's idiots out there that's going to do this? That means the police department's going to have to be there a lot more. It's just going to bring a lot of trouble. And I can't speak for my neighbors, but I can almost guarantee at least five of my neighbors will move if this happens. I mean, that's just the way it's going to be. You're going to lose people. It's going to cause more problems and there's going to be, I've been down to the one at Madison Avenue because I, I clean parking lots for a living. I've cleaned that parking lot and I've seen people that go there. I've seen people try to get other people. I see them sell stuff right out in the parking lot after they go get it. That's what's going to happen. You're going to have people selling, going next door to Ike's or to the corner, and they're going to sell it to somebody who's going to buy it, as most people do anyway. And, you know, it's great for people that are near. I'm all for it. I'm just not for it for across the street from my house. I got grandkids, my kids come, I don't want them to see this, you know, be around that. I don't want to have to be worried about who's going to come or who do I got to worry about? Going to get shot across the street or am I going to get shot, my wife going to get shot because some drug deal went wrong? It's just, I don't think it's a good idea. And, and me personally, my wife personally, we'll sell our house, we'll move. We'll move out of Union Township. We love where we live. We've been there ten years. My mother-in-law owned it before we did, we bought it from them. They was there ten years. So, I mean, I mean, that's all I got to say on the matter. But I really believe it's going to cause more crimes, there's going to be more trouble. And I'm just not going to, I'm not going to be there for it. We love living in Union Township, but we will move. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, sir. This time, is there anyone else has a poll of comments for this evening, for this hearing?
Please state your name and address. George Martin, fourteen sixty-six U.S. Highway fifty, Cincinnati Challenge Ranch.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will, uh, be brief as best I can, uh, but not too long. A little bit about myself, um, I have been, uh, involved in, uh, counseling, in volunteer and, uh, paid and professionally, uh, since I started volunteering at Clermont County Youth Services in nineteen eighty-five. I've been a Clermont County resident since then, nineteen eighty-five. And, uh, then I got involved as a volunteer and a mentor with then-named Teen Challenge Cincinnati, uh, for over twenty years. And then, uh, out of a calling, uh, I became the executive director, left the corporate world, uh, in two thousand, the beginning of two thousand and two. I have, uh, counseled personally and in group, uh, men, uh, young, teenagers, young and old, easily two thousand men in the last twenty-plus years and over several hundred women. Uh, Cincinnati Challenge Ranch used to be, the new, just a new DBA, uh, was Teen Challenge Cincinnati. And, uh, we've got a men's facility that started downtown, fourteen ten Vine. Next year's our fiftieth anniversary in Cincinnati. Uh, we've been in Clermont County, uh, since, uh, sorry, nineteen eighty. And, uh, I founded a women's home first down in Milford, uh, which, uh, lasted only three years out of, uh, the senior leadership not being able to, uh, maintain, maintain it. But, uh, I started then a women's home in Miami Township, which is in two thousand and nine, which is going great for women who are pregnant, non-pregnant. We are residential-based, the men live there, the women live there, and for six-plus months, uh, take on basically exchange old lifestyle of addiction for a whole new lifestyle. Having said that, uh, like I said, I've got, uh, easily, uh, forty-plus thousand man-hours in counseling men and women in addiction. And with that, my goal here, uh, is to inform, uh, not, but I want to say outset, not in any way to, uh, limit proper distribution of medication, uh, in the right format and the right way to people that need it. Let me bring up a couple of things. That I believe that, uh, first of all, the distribution center, uh, will, in terms of a profit-loss center, uh, will bring about much lot more loss than profit it will to anybody, uh, in our community here. And that the addictive properties, along with its physical, mental, even spiritual downsides, outweigh any kind of usefulness in a broad or readily accessible distribution to our society. The Ohio Medical Marijuana Card eligibility is already too broad. I'm going to point out some things. And, uh, I believe that we'll look back on this, uh, and it won't be long, that we will absolutely regret, uh, what we're doing here. And if anything, I would like to see in terms of this information I bring, that there would be, uh, some encouragement to look further in terms of at least limiting how much we have of this in our community. The marijuana industry in Ohio, uh, is actively marketing marijuana as a solution to the opioid epidemic. And, but it has proven not that, uh, they're, they're, they're marketing it as a safe and effective substitute for opioid, but it is not. And that is, the studies have shown that marijuana is a significant risk factor in the increased and medical use of opioids. And that, uh, the opioid overdose fatalities, sorry, have increased in Colorado and other places it's been legalized that by an incremental percentage. I want to talk about accessibility. This is off the ohio medicalcard.com website. And, uh, it's a beautifully done website, uh, in terms of technically. And, uh, the accessibility, the accessibility is, as they say, uh, as Ohio's has got eighteen years or older, um, and, but under eighteen of age, if there's an assigned caregiver who's at least twenty-one years of age. And it's interesting, I just make a note that, tell, tell me if I'm wrong, um, that, uh, in Ohio, to go ahead and just get a HUTPOL, you've got to be twenty-one, right? Okay. I just found that a little interesting. And that, uh, uh, but you've got to also get the, to get the medical marijuana card, you've got to meet with a doctor and get approved. And, uh, the site goes on, explains beautifully what is a medical marijuana card. And then they go on to, uh, go on how to get it and, uh, you can even get it online. My concern is that the accessibility is, uh, open to not only fraudulent access, but unwarranted access, which I'm going to, uh, uh, talk about in a minute. Including even straw buyers, um, and, uh, in this whole thing. And I have even individuals I brought with me that would testify firsthand of how, uh, they had a lifestyle of that. I want to, uh, look, they talk about, and there's obviously in terms of THD, we're not talking about CBD, which is legal. CBD, by the way, uh, cannabonol, uh, which is not psychoactive in any way, I've got no issues with. And, uh, which I occasionally use for some aches and pains. And, uh, but it can be used as a pain reliever to a degree, anxiety reliever, and to a degree, uh, help with insomnia. But what I'm talking about is the THC, the high, uh, the Delta eight, the Delta nine, the synthetic THC's that are being brought out is all these, um, answers for, um, uh, our problems. And I just want to, uh, mention that one of the things, and again, uh, they list a lot of serious on this website, uh, things that it will help with and, uh, that you need to get the, uh, approved for with everything from AIDS to, uh, um, ulceritis. But some of the things that are in there I thought were interesting, including fibromyalgia and, uh, irritable bowel syndrome, which I dealt with occasionally and deal with, uh, a diet, Metamucil, and, uh, tried to lower my stress, but not necessarily getting on marijuana. But I found it interesting with fibromyalgia in terms of, also the website, I want to say, they beautifully take you to it. And again, that's ohio marijuana card dot com. You can go to it and it's step-by-step, even step one, step two, step three. Step by step takes you through, okay, now here are the things that it's approved in Ohio. And it, and you can click on, you know, whether it's AIDS or whether it's chronic, uh, uh, pain or whether it's fibromyalgia, and you click on it and says, well, here's the things that you'd have to address with it. And it literally gives you the, you need, you need, it, it's this, this, and this. And I know from fact, again, from the thousands of people that I've interviewed, both men and women and counsel, that when we had the big suboxone problems and Goshen and everything like that and all around, they knew exactly what to say. Exactly what to say. I've got some of my students, exactly, I mean, the exact words to say, the clinical words. So then the doctor, well, okay. And, you know, under fibromyalgia, they just, they list, it's this, this, or this. And I decided, you know, um, because I've had some students before, like, you know, I've got some pains because I take guys that are addicts, I take women that are addicts. And, and an addict needs things to, uh, help them cope with. It's just one of the many things. But I looked up fibromyalgia on, I thought this was pretty credible, on the Mayo Clinic, Mayo Clinic website. I did this today, so it's pretty recent, Mayo Clinic. And fibromyalgia, by the, let me go back. So in the medical marijuana, um, medical card, you can do this online. You can do this, you know, it's easy, step one, step two, step three, they'll take you right through it, online. Well, it's interesting in the Mayo Clinic though, and they tell you what to say. In the Mayo Clinic fibromyalgia, they're saying for fibromyalgia, you have to have a physical test. Mayo Clinic, physical test right there. So any physical tests, they test whether it's your upper region, right region, left region, right region, and your axial region. And then they want you to say, in Mayo Clinic, they say, but, and you should also have a CBC, complete blood count. Unfortunately, due to some medical issues, I get those a lot. And they also want you to do some other tests that I don't even, I can't even pronounce it. They want you to do a thyroid test, you're not going to be able to do that online. And also some different tests. But then I read further on, and I'm going to finish with this part, and it says, under pain relievers, I am quoting from the Mayo Clinic website, opioid medications are not recommended because they can lead to significant side effects and dependence that will worsen over time. Also, how is abuse of this going to be monitored? How do we know that, you know, Sally, Tom, Mary, you know, getting the medical card, whether it's warranted or not? Again, I am not an opponent, I'm not an anti-med guy to those that need it. When properly distributed through like a pharmacy? How will we monitor abuse? How will this affect, further affect the workplace? Workplace injuries, performance, attendance? How will this impact law enforcement? With driving? Impairness? I am telling you, and again, Malcolm Gladwell in Outliers is often quoted. And in his book, he talks, he, he says, for someone to be considered an expert in something, they need to apply that skill or trade ten thousand hours, minimally. I have upwards of fifty thousand hours, one-on-one and group counseling, people in addiction. And a lot more hours maybe, counseling mothers and fathers and sisters in grief and burying them. And I am telling you this firsthand, I am the canary in the cage, that marijuana is a gateway drug. It is the gateway drug. Something may take it over another five years with something synthetic, that's easy. And let me show you something here in terms of, remember how, I mean, tobacco? Remember tobacco used to be good for pregnant women? They used to advertise that. And then, I mean, for those of us that are slightly older, God bless our age, when they were promoting it even more and more, and then it got pushed back on tobacco promotion because the young people are starting to smoke. We don't want to promote it. You don't see any of that anymore. Well, this is off the med- the medicalmarijuana dispensaries dot com. I'd love this. Delta eight cherry cubes. It's a dietary supplement containing THC. Wow. Chill, chill, square gummies. Oh, Delta eight THC with CBD. What's the difference between Delta eight and Delta nine? Delta nine, Delta nine THC is traditional THC. Delta eight is nothing but a synthetic version of that. That they still don't even know what that can actually have to do to the human being. The difference is that Delta nine, uh, is slightly different in that it's less of a high. Uh, but still, you have the same effects, you have the same, other than the high, the, the, the level of euphoria. You still have the same effects as regular THC in difficulty with coordination, slowed reaction, anxiety, increased anxiety, including, uh, memory loss and when used repeatedly firsthand, anxiety encroaching even to a psychosis, a state of just walking psychosis, paranoia. More, how about this? CBD gummies, look at this, it's great. Good for all the kids. Here's, I like this one. This was THC also. Pure Vita, makes it look like a vitamin tablet, Pure Vita. New Delta nine THC vegan gummies are here. I can't wait till they come out with a keto version of it, so I can get on it. So, and here it is, get your online card quick and easy, even discounts, get online, online. Gentlemen and gentlewomen, there's something more than nefarious happening here and has been happening. Unfortunately, I do this for a living, and it is unfortunately, for way too many years, to see way too many families destroyed. You have to look at the trajectory of things. What do we want, what do we want this township, what do we want this county to look like in three, five, 10 years? Just like taxes, you can't roll them back, they're sticking taxes from the 40s. Again, I am not anti-med. But the process and the methodology of this is nothing more than white collar men competing with the illicit drug trade. And this is nothing more than the precursor to allow distribution when things are decriminalized. Why set ourselves up for that? Why let the horse out of the barn? I beg you seriously consider this. Not emotionally, as thoughtful men and women in terms of downside. In terms of downside, thank you very much.
Thank you. Could you please state your name and address for the record, please?
John Bacon, they call me DeeDee, 4164 Forsythia.
If you're right, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so have you got?
I do.
Thank you.
So it's all about people. I've been serving in this community now 28, 28 years as a pastor, working with people at various needs, seeing people in their various struggles. And it's concerning to see some of the things that have happened in our community. As we're talking history, I think it's important to remind ourselves, and maybe just push pause here, to remember that in the 90s, Purdue Farmer came out and they told communities like ours, the medical community like ours, they told us, hey, we got a non-addictive drug that's FDA-approved, that would not be addictive. And it's a miracle drug that's gonna give you your life back, to many. It's a miracle drug that's gonna have ultimate testimonies of people that say to change them forever. And that's what they pushed. And then we had the mess created by Oxycontin that devastated a lot of communities and affected our community quite significantly. Oxycontin then grew to its cousin heroin, and we just heard the report on now fentanyl. This smells the same. It smells like, as being said, people who don't see our community as individuals, but instead see them as units of profit, all in the name of helping them, which is sad because people are hurting and people need help with their pain, I get it. But the way it's been done and just the promotion and I just ask that we consider taking a pause and really consider that, and consider the testimony of our canary in the community who may appear to you like out there. But a lot of times, it's those guys on the outliers that see things as they are. The prophet in the wilderness, warning. And I'm worried about the trends of our community, this is a great place to rear our kids, it's a great place to serve. My church has served and taken it upon themselves to be a light in this community, to help wherever we can, and this does concern me. This does concern me. I ask that you remember that I believe it was your predecessors that approved a strip club there in Mount Carmel many, many years ago, and we remember how that turned out. And at the time, I'm sure the arguments were, oh, it's gonna bring business and it's gonna bring good, but did it really? So I ask that the trustees stand by their name. You have the trust of our community, all members of our community. You're called to protect the innocent, you're called to punish the evil doer and bring him to justice, and you're called to provide an environment where good people can flourish. And consider that in this decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else this time that'd like to speak on the public zoning case?
I just want to address, I don't have to say my name again, right?
State your name again, just for me to, for the record.
Katie Hart, I do.
Katie Hart, thank you.
So I just want to address a couple of things. From the safety perspective, we are a neighbor, you know, we are the same as a neighboring business. People are outside too late, you go walk next door, you call them, or a neighbor who's having a party too late, which we close before what I would deem as too late, 7:00 p.m. So we're, we're not a noisy business. We, in our operation in Sandusky and Springfield, we've never had an attempted break-in, robbery, we've not had any incidents that we have to address. I think our, our type of business actually, because of the required surveillance, we're under 24/7 surveillance that is monitored by the Board of Pharmacy, we deter that type of activity. And of course, we don't want people loitering in our property or in our parking lot as well. So we would be with the community from that perspective. And we also think that it removes the need for there was a mention of sales going on, on the streets. That's part of, you know, the medical industry is focused on medical sales and trying to eradicate that type of activity being, going on. I can't really speak too much to the, the other concerns raised because it sounds like those concerns are more with the rules that the Board of Pharmacy, the state of Ohio, has defined and/or the process for which qualified conditions are identified. But of course, our industry has a ton of stigma surrounding it, we understand that. We see that on a daily basis, and it is a fairly new industry. So we hope that continued research will show, there is, for every piece of research you see as a proponent for the industry, there's also the research that is against it. We have seen so many success cases, we have, you know, patients that we also have hired that have multiple sclerosis, that have, this has changed their life. My mother is a cancer survivor, she's in Florida, which is also a medical state, and this has improved her quality of life significantly. So again, we are a part of the industry, but not the ones who write the rules and identify how things need to occur within that industry. The Board of Pharmacy is very controlled. I will reference the Delta eight comment, that is what I would call right now a loophole within the, the way the federal rules are written. We don't sell Delta eight, that is, like, forget his name, Mr. Martin, I think, mentioned. That is not a naturally occurring cannabinoid within the plant. Delta nine THC is a naturally occurring cannabinoid within the cannabis plant. And that is what our products are, are created with and sold. So we, we don't participate in the, what is seemingly becoming rampant Delta eight component. And again, like I mentioned, we, we focus on education. I think a lot of the stigma around the industry is that we've had many, many years of education in, in the manner of marijuana is bad. And we're just recently, with the legalization per state, being able to focus on the benefits that the, the plant can provide. So we are very education-focused and we hope to help continue to combat that stigma. I think that is all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir?
Hello? I'm Robert Murbine, 546 Branton Lane, Cincinnati, Ohio.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so have you got?
I do.
Thank you.
So I'm kind of an interesting in-between with this whole thing. One, my wife, my son, and myself live in this neighborhood where the proposed development is going in. And at the same time, I am also the Director of Education at Cincinnati Challenge Ranch, where for the last nine years, I have personally taught and counseled roughly 300 men that are seeking freedom from substance abuse. During that time, counseling and teaching individuals and groups continuously, when being introduced to a new student and walking him through his journey to freedom, I continually find out that where it began for my students was with marijuana use. And for many of them that have progressed to harder and harder, more destructive drugs, marijuana use actually continues to be a part of their life while they're going on those harder and harder drugs. And I do think also it is interesting that this proposed development is going into a neighborhood that is full of single-family homes and is about a quarter mile or so up the road from a Catholic elementary school. Again, as Mr. Martin alluded to, I am not speaking against the legal and responsible distribution to individuals who need it. But what I can tell you as an individual who personally has worked with individuals coming out of substance abuse for the last nine years, teaching them on a daily basis, counseling with them, crying with them, helping them to come up with plans to better their lives, that this will open the floodgates to things that Mr. Martin alluded to, that we have to step back and take a long-term, big-picture look at what this will open the doors to. You know, one thing I was taught by my pastor several years ago as a new Christian is that everything leads to something else. And I know from personal experience in teaching over 300 men that the beginning of marijuana use for them led to something else. And I can stand here before you tonight, along with Mr. Martin and others, the pastor that just spoke, this will lead to something else. And so I plead with us tonight to take time and consider what we want the future of our community to look like, my community specifically, it's right where I live. And I personally do not want to raise a son, he's three, gonna be four in January. I do not want to raise him in a culture where more and more moral and ethical issues are coming into our community because we've opened the floodgates. Thank you.
Okay. This time, is there any other further proponent or opponent? Testimony? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Dolores Keith. I live at 4775 Birdsall Road, Williamsburg, 45176.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
So have you got?
Yes, I do. I come from a little bit different background in that I'm also a healthcare provider. And I've had some really serious illness. In 2018, I almost died. My husband took me to the emergency room at midnight. Yes, I was feeling just horrible, but I didn't have the energy to get up and go. If he hadn't taken me, I would not be alive the next day. I was in kidney failure. My intestines had ruptured, and I had bowel matter in my gut. To say this was painful would be an understatement. And the consequences of that was a loss of a year of my life. I lost 75 pounds, all my hair. And this was something that I had struggled with, with Irritable Bowel Syndrome all my life, but I had no idea that I had diverticulitis, colitis, and I had this serious infection, and I was in and out of the hospital in IV antibiotics. The interesting thing is that I'm, I'm of a Celtic background, I'm Irish. Guess what? Opioids do nothing for me. They do not relieve my pain in any way. In fact, they gave me fentanyl before a procedure and said, you should be asleep now. And I said, well, I'm not, what are we gonna do? And they, well, they couldn't proceed. So the long and the short for this is, is that pain control was my motivation to find out more about these type of medications. I'm not a person who in my life has taken medications because I was always pregnant or nursing a baby. I have 10 children, one set of twins, I have nine grandchildren. And I'm an International Board Certified Lactation Consultant. And so those two things, marijuana and, and my profession, don't exactly mix. But my son, Kevin, was an uncontrolled epileptic. We had tried every drug there was to try. He had seven medication failures. And somebody said to me, you know, there is this form of marijuana that might stop his seizures. But we didn't have any access to any of that here in Ohio. So my son had brain surgery to stop his seizures. They removed three-quarters of the hippocampus out of the middle of his brain and his right and left temporal lobe. Now, one would think, we were told, that we would know within two weeks after the procedure, if not, it was successful. It was not successful. My son was left with a continuing case of epileptic seizures. He still seizes every single day. He doesn't fall into epileptic status anymore, which means that you seize, convulse, until you die, unless somebody intersees. And we've had three episodes of that prior to the brain surgery. But now he's on medications, he's reasonably stable, and he only has seizures first thing in the morning when he wakes up. That piqued my interest when somebody said, hey, have you heard about this? And then I heard about this little girl in Colorado who was getting CBD, and it was stopping her seizures, but she couldn't take it out of the state. So the family moved to Colorado. So one day, my son had one of these seizures where they sometimes go on for three or four days at a time, where he just vomits continuously, he can't keep a seizure drug stamp, he can't do anything. The only choice is to medicate him with a rectal suppository, which by the way, $550 per dose, and insurance will not pay for it, to stop his seizures. And then he's unconscious for three or four hours, wakes up, and the process starts all over again. So I said to him one day, you know, I have some of this, this THC-CBD mix in the refrigerator in the basement. Could you just try putting some of it under your tongue? We've gotta do something to stop these seizures, or you're gonna have to go to the hospital. Lo and behold, God was watching because I put this in this kid's mouth, and he didn't have any more seizures. He went upstairs and ate dinner, his food stayed down. I think both Larry and I were in a state of shock. We couldn't believe what we were seeing. We'd been through every medication hell, an open skull with refrigerated skull in the refrigerator, or a piece of the skull refrigerated for a week, between the time they opened his skull and they removed part of his hippocampus. That's part of the procedure. It is horrible, absolutely horrible, and the patient's not allowed to have medication because they want them to seize as much as they can. He set a record. University Hospital didn't know what to do with him. And so after this surgery, they thought they had succeeded. Well, they had not. We fought with them for a year, until I got on a plane and flew him to Mayo Clinic to find out what they had done wrong. And they had created a whole new seizure bed for him in his frontal lobe through this accident. And he grew up as a healthy, normal kid. He's 30 years old now, but he still has this affliction, and he will all of his life. Without the ability to have this, he has no life. For myself, this has controlled the pain that would bend me in half, and I still function. I don't get high from this, I don't take enough to make me unconscious, or infect my, my ability to, to do anything whatsoever. I take enough to stop my pain and absolutely no, nothing else. And I also have arthritis, and the days that I have missed taking this at bedtime, I have a heck of a time getting out of bed, just putting the weight on my legs. So to get a card, you have to go through a fairly rigorous program. I think things got relaxed during COVID, and you could do some of this renewal online because they didn't want to do face-to-face meetings. But when I got my marijuana card, I met with an internist. But when I got my marijuana card, I met with an internist who sat and talked to me for an hour and then looked up my records on Epix to verify what illnesses I had. It was not pulling something out of the sky. He made recommendations of what medication I should take, which strains or cultivars would be most helpful for me to reduce the inflammation in my gut and in my joints. And damn it, it worked. There are dispensaries all around. They're not going away. If one has an argument about the use of this medication, then you need to take it back to the state and deal with it on that level. My son's neurologist encouraged us to go this direction because he didn't know what else to do. Thank you.
Thank you. This time, is there any further public comment on this hearing? Mr. Hartman, advocate. Please state your name and address for the record.
John McGraw, 4604 Blainfield.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. Just real quick, I'm not here to argue the merits of what this product is, but the people presenting this case I have respect for. And, but in this case, I'm just wondering, are you using good judgment as far as where you want to place this business? I mean, it is a fairly residential area. I realize Mount Carmel, Tabasco is a busy road. But there's a school right down the street, there's a lot of single-family homes. There's probably a better spot, especially people who know real estate, could probably locate a place that would be a much better location for this type of business. And I'm just wondering if they've given it 100% full thought, is this the best place to go? And I just know, in my experience, in the past eight years, we've tried very, very hard, step by step, to move the entire Mount Carmel area forward. And I just don't feel like this is a good step forward for the Mount Carmel area. And some of the towns they mentioned that they have business off it, I believe I've heard Springfield and Zanduski, these aren't exactly towns up and moving. Springfield's got a lot of issues, a lot of issues. So I don't think being right in the middle of a mostly residential area with a school right down the street is probably the best place that I would pick. And if I was advising them, I would say, "Hey, let's look around and see if there's a better place for this business." I'm also looking at the elevation, this is just a minor point, but it seems like there should be like brick or stone or some other materials into that elevation. I can't really tell from the picture exactly what that's made out of, but I don't have all the staff reports like you do. But just my advice, if you are in a low building, it should have some more upgraded materials on it. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hartman.
Thank you, thank you. I realize the subject of marijuana is a very controversial and an emotional issue. However, I think people smarter than me have looked into this and feel that there is a medical benefit if you have the right substance. What you buy on the corner of the street is not going to be what you buy in your facility. This is going to be under a controlled thing. It's not somebody who grows it in a grow lamp in their basement and distributes it that way. This is not that type of operation. What we had here before was a large metal building that was industrial zoned. This property has been industrial zoned probably since 1959, before it was changed to B7 and that. And so therefore, you know, it's, I think, an appropriate use. The traffic on Mount Carmel, Tabasco Road makes it not your typical residential community anymore. We know that. But you know, with the security measures in place that they have, as I understand it, like I said, people smarter than me have looked into this and have determined that there are medical benefits. We had Dolores giving us her personal story, and I think that's, thank you, Dolores, that was very heartwarming. And so I would encourage you to approve this. The conditions that Mark has placed on it, we can take care of those. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hartman. Is there anyone further at this time for the public hearing on the zoning case? All right, seeing no further public comment, we will close the public comment portion of the zoning case.
Chairman, can I ask some questions?
Yeah, you can ask some questions. Do you want to do that now, or do you want to...
No, I'd actually like Katie to come back up to the podium. Yeah, so do you drive down here from Cleveland today for this?
I did.
Was that, what, four or five hours?
About 3:45.
Okay, that's a long haul. Hey, so I will just have a couple of questions, just specific, kind of to business operations. So in addition to the medical marijuana, what other types of products are you going to be retailing? Like, you know, hats, t-shirts, bongs, rolling papers, pipes?
We don't currently, so at any of our facilities, offer t-shirts, hats, those types of things. We do have papers or cartridges, you know, the mouthpiece to go with a cartridge. But those are typically the max of our additional offerings.
So the rolling papers and the cartridges? Okay. Also, I'm curious about how you, I guess, work around financial restrictions. My understanding, you can't work with banks, maybe I'm wrong about it, correct me if I'm wrong. I'm certainly no expert here, I've just been doing some research, trying to learn. You can't take credit cards, debit cards. So are you cash-only, or kind of help me understand how it works?
No, so actually, from a banking perspective, things have actually opened up pretty significantly since it became legal in Ohio. Of course, your typical larger federal banks still are a little questionable, but we typically work with local credit unions in the locations that we're in. Here in Ohio, we're through, we typically use RightPat is the bank. And as far as debit and credit, Ohio has expanded to allow debit and credit usage. So we have the functionality to do that, as well as an ATM on-site for people who prefer to use cash.
Okay, great. And last, I thought of, and I thought of this just during, I guess, earlier testimony. I don't suppose you take medical insurance, or does medical insurance...
Not yet, unfortunately.
Okay.
Out of our control. We would love to, but...
That's all I have, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thanks, Katie.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Chris Hixley, is a numberized, 444, Woodford, Cincinnati, Ohio, 1255.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do, I do. And I didn't hear anybody ask the question, maybe somebody was going to, but I'd like these people to address this question. Is, and if she would listen, so she could possibly address this question. I heard two other people bring it up. Why on earth would you try to locate this business? I hear a lot of stories about the medical stuff and the, "How it helped, pot helped me, how this helped me." But why on earth would you, especially you, Mr. Hartman, as somebody that's part of Claremont County's culture and history, come in here and want this to be in the middle of a bunch of single-family homes right down the street from a school? Did it not cross your mind that you should have looked for a location that was remote from single-family homes and remote from a school?
Mr. Hicks, please direct comments to the board.
Okay, Mr. Logue, I get it.
It's hostile.
You're hostile to me every time I get up here. And maybe that should stop, and we'd have a much happier world. Maybe a little less of always being hostile with me would be good for these meetings. But I'd like to hear these people address, why on earth, as community, how could we trust you as community partners in Claremont County and in Union Township, when you think it's good judgment to try to put a pot dispensary place in the middle of single-family homes and right down the street from a school? I'd like somebody to get up there here and answer that question and not tell me about how marijuana helped them with their ailment. That's the question I think needs to get answered here tonight. And I'm a little ashamed that you guys didn't ask the question I'm asking.
At this time, does that conclude our public comments? Thank you. We'll conclude public comments. Mr. Hicks, your out order. Since you've not spoken, we'll bring you up, yes. Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm super nervous about this.
You're okay.
My name's Elizabeth Hornsworth. I live 4143 James Drive.
Just raise your right hand, I have to swear again for the record, sorry. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
The way I see it, I ask myself, "Who made cannabis?" And my answer is God. Man-made pharmaceuticals, God-made cannabis. It's a plant. It is in the way you use it, it is in what's in your heart and how moral you are and the decisions you're making for your life. But I have come across so many children who use cannabis for, because they're very sick. Not recreational, we're not talking recreational, we're talking medical. So when I hear that it stops seizures dead in their tracks when seizure medicines do not work with them, when I read this right here, this came off the government website for medical cannabis. The use of it for children is allowed if you have a doctor, you have parents, and you have a very sick kid. They have to prove that they're sick to the doctor, and the doctor has to okay it. I don't see how any other people should get in the way of that, but there are rules to entering buildings, have to have the child, have to have the card that the doctor proved up. There are very stringent laws in Ohio. So when a kid has Crohn's disease, epilepsy, or other seizure disorders, I'm reading off of the government website where these are the approved treatments, this cannabis is approved for these treatments. A lot of kids that are sick have to move to other states to get the treatments. But because Ohio opened up the use for child, for minors, the seizures are a big deal with kids. But my point is, in public school, there are children that do need to medicate, and they have to go to the nurse's office. And it's not smoking, it's like a gummy or some kind of oil. So I am advocating for allowing it so that it's a treatment, possible treatment, if my kid gets cancer, if my kid has spinal cord disease or injury. Because looking to the back, you might have something against it, but looking forward to this generation, it should be an option for moms and dads who have terminal illness kids, who have Tourette's Syndrome, traumatic brain injury, and all of this has to be proven between that doctor and these parents. It is something that I would say is God's medicine and should be allowed as a choice. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. All right, this time we'll close public comment.
Did you want to go?
We can ask a question, we can ask a question and the board can comment.
No, I just knew there was one more, she's raising her hand.
So board, at this time, we can introduce for board comments and enter into that. We just went an hour and 15 minutes on this zoning hearing. Would anyone with the Diaz, board members, do you want a five-minute bio?
Yes, I do.
Okay. So I don't know how you need to track that, Ms. Ayers or Mr. Campbell, we'll take a five-minute biology break.
I'm glad you suggested that.
It's the first I've ever... I want everyone to give this the attention it deserves. Uh, so we're, there's no further public comment, we're closing that, opening, uh, for board comments at this time. So open it for board comments, um, we can, uh, seek, uh, and, and if there's any questions that we need to bring. We can by all means be able to bring someone up for, for a question or to clarify anything during board comments.
I mean, as you were moving second first and.
Yeah, yeah, so, so we're being asked, uh, uh, for seeking a motion to, uh, approve, um, the Union Township zoning case, uh, plan development. We have a motion.
For what? Approve or deny.
Yeah, approve or deny or modify, we have that motion.
So moved?
I'll second that.
The motion was to approve?
Um, yeah, he made the motion to approve. So is that?
Open for discussion.
Just open for discussion, just to get us open for discussion.
You go first. All right, I'll go first. So, um, for, you know, perspective and context, I started doing some research on this to, to look at federal law. Was more familiar with state law on, on, on the matter, cause I was part of the, I was in the General Assembly when we passed the, uh, the medical marijuana bill. And then also studying through our, our, um, zoning code. So, um, I kinda got a four point, uh, kind of presentation, if you will, or discussion. So the first part's gonna be about the federal law, second part's about Ohio law, third part's gonna be about our zoning code. And the fourth, fourth part's, it's gonna be like a five point, uh, bullet summary. So first off, um, just a definition, I got all this information from the D E A's website. Definition of marijuana. Marijuana is a mind altering psychoactive drug produced by the cannabis plant. There's a, a, a quote, uh, "The Controlled Substances Act places all, places all substances, which were in some manner regulated under existing federal law into one of five schedules. This placement is based upon the substance's medical use, potential for abuse, and safety or dependence liability." Unquote, and I think a key word here having to do with marijuana plays, uh, potential for abuse more than anything else. And, and Mr. Chairman, also, I don't typically just read from notes, the way I'm doing this, I'm just, cause I got a lot of material here, I just think it's gonna work out better than, than me just trying to evaluate it. So I want to discuss it very briefly, just give some examples of these five schedules that, that are on the D E A's website. I'm gonna start with the most benign or, or the, the least concerning, which is schedule five. So just a couple of examples, just to put things in perspective. Antidiarrhea medication, analgesics, cough medicine, basic stuff. So then schedule four ups the ante a little bit, you got Xanax, Valium, and Ambien. And, and these, gee, there's a sample, there's hundreds out, out on their website, if you wanna be, you know, look up any particular drug. And, and I pulled these samples just cause some of the, you know, some of these are household names. Uh, the schedule three drug then, some examples, again Tylenol with codeine, anabolic steroids and testosterone. The next one is a direct quote from, from the D E A website. Schedule two drugs, substances or chemicals are defined as drugs with a high potential for abuse, with the use potentially leading to severe psychological or physical dependence. These drugs are also considered dangerous. Unquote. Some examples of that, again, this is schedule two. Vicodin, cocaine, methamphetamines, methanol, demerol, oxycontin, fentanyl, Adderall and Ritalin. Surprised me to see Ritalin on that list. Schedule one, here's, here's a, again, a direct quote from D E A website. Schedule one drugs, substances or chemicals are defined as drugs with no currently accepted medical use and a high potential for abuse. Examples, heroin, LSD, marijuana, ecstasy and G H B. Uh, G H B is the date rape drug. So in summary, on the federal portion of this, like heroin and LSD, marijuana's a schedule one drug and is illegal for any purpose, including medical. Now for Ohio law, so a little history on this. So back in, uh, twenty fifteen, there was a failed effort put on by the pot people in Ohio to try to get recreational marijuana legalized. That failed. During the polling for all of that, medical marijuana was polling favorably with the public. So the pot people were gonna go back to the ballot with their own medical marijuana language. And this course of medical marijuana was a stepping stone, obviously, to go to the full recreational, like, uh, you know, Colorado and a few other states have. So what happened was the General Assembly stepped in to work with the pot people to, to, to strike a deal and come up with legislation. So the theory is that, well, if the public is gonna legalize this, you know, let's, let's put some controls on it and, and, and make it more the way we want it from the perspective of the General Assembly, rather than the way the pot people want it from, from their perspective. Of course, they're still gonna come back with, uh, full blown recreational legalization at some point, they're gonna try that again. So what I did is, this is House Bill five twenty-three and one hundred and thirty-first General Assembly, this was back in twenty sixteen, I voted no on the bill. But I was part of the, you know, I was at the, you know, I was sitting at the table having a discussion on all this. So what I did is I pulled out just, um, you know, I guess about eight or ten bullet points on the bill, on, on the bill, kinda what it does and doesn't do, or what it allows or disallows. And, and, um, I pulled out stuff that was just kinda interesting or more really relevant to Union Township. So it permits a patient on the recommendation, that's a key word, recommendation, as opposed to a prescription, cause you cannot get a prescription for marijuana. Uh, recommendation from a physician, now physician, what does that mean? Uh, you have to be an M D or a D O. Recommendation of a physician to use medical marijuana to treat a qualifying medical condition. So when we passed the bill, we listed twenty-two qualifying medical conditions, uh, since then, and, and, and left it open ended for the pharmacy board to approve additional ones, I believe three more were, were approved since then, I'm not sure of that. So there may be like twenty-five conditions that are currently approved, you know, but I'm not certain that's the case. Uh, it considers a person who has been fired for using medical marijuana, to have been fired for just cause and generally ineligible for unemployment benefits. Prohibits the cultivation of medical marijuana for personal use. Prohibits the smoking of medical marijuana, however, vaping is permitted. Authorizes a municipal corporation or a township to prohibit or limit the number of retail dispensaries. Prohibits a cultivator, processor, retail dispensary or laboratory from being located within five hundred feet of a school, church, library, playground or park. The act permits only, say, was it the act, that's the bill that passed, got signed into law. The act permits only the following forms of medical marijuana to be dispensed. Oils, tinctures, plant material, edibles, patches and any other form approved by the Board of Pharmacy. It prohibits any form or method considered attractive to children. Gummy bears were mentioned tonight, which would be in that category. Plant material may not have a, this is a ten dollar word, tetrahydrocannabinol, that's T H C. May not have a T H C content of more than thirty-five percent and extracts may not have T H C content of more than seventy percent. So to put that in perspective, I'll, so I, so I did a little research, I didn't get this from the D A's website, I was trying to figure out, so what was the T H C, T H C content? You know, back, back, back when I was in college. And it was like three to four percent back then. So today's marijuana is ten to twenty times more potent than back in the eighties. The, the last bullet point I got here is the, uh, the possession limit is, is a ninety day supply is what the patients are allowed to have without running afoul of state law. So, but regardless of Ohio law, all of this is illegal under federal law. And that's the, the, the background and history, which now brings me to the specifics of our zoning resolution. So gentlemen, what I want you to consider is the Union Township zoning resolution, Article One, Section one twenty. And section one twenty has eight subsections within it, and of those eight, I want to point out two specifically. So one twenty, section one twenty reads, "This resolution is enacted for the general purpose of promoting the public health, safety, comfort and welfare of the residents of Union Township." So subsection five of section one twenty reads, "To encourage the creation of a strong sense of community identity." Subsection six, "The creation and enhancement of a strong sense of place." Which brings me to, and this was mentioned tonight, about, we had biker bars back in the eighties. We had, you know, some of you might remember Vic's Bruin Q, it was a big shoot out there and, and, uh, that, that place eventually got, uh, shut down. Then we had the strip joints that moved in. Uh, there was rumors, deja vu, I was, I was one of them that was personally outside picketing the, these places to, to, and, and, you know, to run them out of town. Eventually we succeeded in twenty eleven. I don't want to be seeing Mount Carmel or anyplace else in Union Township going backwards. So think of the message, additionally gentlemen, think of the message that these places are sending to our children. Advertisements for bongs and other drug paraphernalia are already showing up in our mailboxes. We know that marijuana is a gateway drug to the more powerful and deadly addictive drugs. Also consider then section one thirty. And I quote, "In their interpretation and application, the provisions of this resolution shall be held to be minimum requirements adopted for the promotion of the public health, safety and the general welfare. Whenever the requirements of this resolution conflict with the requirements of any other lawfully adopted rules, regulations, ordinances or resolutions, the most restrictive or that imposing the higher standards shall govern." Well, those higher standards are federal law, which states that medical marijuana is illegal. Consider Article Six, Section six fourteen, and I'll quote, "Any use which is not specifically," where is specifically? "Any use which is not specifically permitted is prohibited." Unquote. Deem that re, medical marijuana is not a regular retail establishment. If it was carved specifically into Ohio law with, highly restricted, highly regulated. Cannot argue this is just any retail establishment. Also consider the Higher Vice Code thirty-seven ninety-six dot two nine, and I'll, and again, I'm just quoting the, the relevant portion of this. "A Board of Township Trustees may adopt a resolution to prohibit or limit the number of cultivators, processors or retail dispensaries." Well, gentlemen, we've already done that. Ohio, Ohio law does not require that a special resolution be passed specifically naming marijuana dispensaries in order to prohibit those businesses. Therefore, our section six fourteen prevails, and again, I will quote it. "Any use which is not specifically permitted is prohibited." In my opinion, approving this zoning change would be a clear violation of our zoning code. Additionally, it would arguably make this board an accessory, if not accomplice, to a host of federal crimes. Now I'm gonna sum up and, and, and conclude, I got about five bullet points here. Like heroin and LSD, marijuana is a schedule one drug that is illegal under federal law for any purpose, including, including medical. Number two, medical marijuana has proven to be a stepping stone to recreational marijuana. Number three, marijuana is well known to be a gateway drug to more addictive and deadly drugs. Furthermore, the perceived societal acceptance and advertisements for drug paraphernalia sends the wrong message to our children. Number four, medical marijuana dispensaries are arguably in violation of multiple sections of our zoning resolution, including Article One, Section one twenty. They are antithetical to the general purpose of, of promoting the public health, safety, comfort and welfare of the residents of Union Township. Article One, Section one twenty, subsection five, "What medical marijuana brings to Union Township is the antithesis of a strong sense of community identity." Article One, Section twenty, subsection six, "They are contrary to the enhancement of a strong sense of place within Union Township." Article One, Section one thirty, "Marijuana use, medical or otherwise, is clearly in violation of federal law and the higher standard referenced in this section." Article Six, Section six fourteen, and I'll quote, "Any use which is not specifically permitted is prohibited." Higher Vice Code thirty-seven ninety-six dot two nine does not require a special resolution specifically naming marijuana dispensaries in order to prohibit those businesses. And finally, number five, approval of a medical marijuana dispensary would arguably, arguably make this board an accessory, if not an accomplice, to a host of federal crimes. Therefore, gentlemen, I am urging rejection of this proposal. And that concludes my remarks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Yeah, okay, so, I agree, I should've asked the question earlier. Ms. Hart, can't force you, uh, is there any chance that your company would find a different site away from the school? And you, you don't have to come up, you can just answer it. Uh, the microphone's gotta be able to hear.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, I apologize.
Um, the way the site selection process works is, um, typically a company will apply to multiple locations. Um, and that's submitted to the Board of Pharmacy through their very stringent process. And they will actually go through the due diligence of analyzing the sites from a compliance perspective to, so to ensure that it is that five hundred feet away from a church or a school, et cetera. Um, and then depending on the type of, um, selection, it'll either be a lottery selection and the site will be selected based, or sites will be selected based on that. Or, um, an assessment of the location, the traffic, the feasibility of that location. So when they, in this most recent drawing, um, it was a lottery. Um, we did apply to multiple locations and this was the one that was selected by the Board of Pharmacy.
Oh, Board of Pharmacy, okay.
Yes.
Okay, so, so is there any way that you would be willing to work with the township to not be, find a different site away from the residential community or, and/or the school as well? Or is this it?
We would be willing to, but unfortunately, the Board of Pharmacy, the license is granted to this specific site.
Got it, okay, perfect, yeah, thank you, Ms. Hart, appreciate it. So.
Shall I say?
Oh, no, that's all, that's all I got. Quick follow-up question for her.
Then just make sure to come back.
Okay.
After you're done.
For her?
No, for me, so I come.
Uh, so your topic about the licensure, that sounds like a long process, goes through the Board of Pharmacy. How long is that process for retrospect? And tell me, what's your familiarity with the, again, onsite selection and the moratoriums that are put in place on different locations and why Union Township is something that you were able to even receive a site for?
Sure, um, so the process as a whole, um, this last round, I would say we're probably close to the twelve month mark, so the, there's a process typically four to, or three to six months, um, that the applicants are able to prepare their documentation and submit to the Board of Pharmacy. Then the Board of Pharmacy has, I think they typically aim for thirty to sixty days, it typically will, um, go past that, um, to make their selections. And then they have final due diligence based on those selections to ensure that they meet the compliance. Um, so as far as this location, um, we did go through, and I think Mark might have mentioned, um, we did have the appropriate zoning for the parcel directly adjacent. Um, but that unfortunately was, the way we submitted the, the zoning application, we referenced both parcels, but because the building was inadvertently shown on the incorrect parcel, the zoning certificate that we received from Union Township was, although it specified both parcel numbers, I think the intent was that it was for that smaller parcel or skinnier parcel, which unfortunately was not the parcel on which we were, um, granted. was not the parcel on which we were granted the license by Board of Pharmacy.
Okay.
Hence why we are here.
Okay.
I'm sorry, did I miss a few, missed a few questions?
Yeah, well, partly, I'd back it up a little bit more as far as, it's my understanding, again, we've heard a lot tonight, and probably an hour and ten, twenty minutes of commentary that is, is important to hear, community feedback, but tonight's venue is what we're being asked to do. Does this fit the zoning requirements for a retail business? And is that retail business a permitted use in planned development? And from what I heard earlier from community feedback, and that's why I'd love to continue to hear more community feedback, but it's my understanding, and I think you stated it in the higher vice code there about the moratorium, but the time to decide on these businesses that are currently applying has already passed. You know, that's something I want to ask Mark and Susan, engage the community with, but if in discussion with our legal, I mean, the, the short answer is that in our zoning resolution, as early as 2016, when the higher vice code passed, we could have taken action as a board, prior to this board, to pass a moratorium that prohibits medical marijuana dispensaries. The township could have passed that prohibiting the cultivation, distribution, or sale. And that's within township under Ohio law, but because that has, was not previously done, it's not applying here. So that's part of my question. How do you get to the site selection when this is already, like, you know, Union Township doesn't have a moratorium in place, or that's through the Board of Pharmacy, like?
Correct.
That's what, that's part of my question.
So as part of that application process, we engage a legal team to assess the local ordinances, whether there's a moratorium, et cetera.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you. You got more?
It's all good. Yeah, thank you. Okay. So I get it. It's a very emotional topic. Pastor speaking, people for it, medical testimony, I hear it loud and clear. Mr. Logue's right. This is not a vote of yes, I'm in favor of marijuana, medical marijuana, this is not a no vote of I'm against medical marijuana. And I, we've got our law director sitting over here, Mr. Conover, we've got our administrator right over here. I want both of you to interrupt me if I'm wrong on anything. You're not going to hurt my feelings, interrupt me. But so from my understanding, so I've done, tried to do a lot of research leading up to tonight's vote, is, does this business and does this build, does it meet all the legal zoning requirements? It is not, do you like marijuana, or do you not like it? It's, is, does it meet the requirements set for by our township? And so, you know, talking in depth with our legal team, and with Ms. Ayers, our administrator, from my understanding, if we vote this down, you know, we're kind of stuck in a rock and a hard place. We are going to get sued. It's going to happen, probably. And it will cost hundreds of thousands of dollars because our legal team will be fighting your legal team. And, and our legal team is telling me, we will probably lose this case. And so, again, I ask both of you to interrupt me if I'm wrong on this. And so, if we vote this down, we're going to be taking the residents that live in Union Township, your tax dollars, probably, and it's going to be caught up in litigation, and hundreds of thousands of dollars to fight this. And after we fight it, spending your tax dollars, we're going to probably lose if we have a crystal ball, based off the, you know, the advice of, that I'm being given. If I vote yes on it, now we have a medical marijuana dispensary, and, you know, and I know a lot of those, some of you folks don't like that. So I'm being asked the question, does this meet the zoning requirements in Union Township? And based off my zoning director, based off my administrator, and based off my law director, who are the smartest people in this room, in my opinion, they all tell me, yes, it does. What, what choice do I have? We vote no and shoot this down? I have to think reasonably and logically, and what's the best use of tax dollars? It's going to be, we're going to be fighting with a lot of money and a lot of time to fight this, when in the end, we will lose, in my opinion, based off what I'm being told. And again, I asked them to interrupt me if I was wrong on anything I just said, and they haven't. So I don't know what choice I have. The question at hand is, does this meet our zoning requirements? It's not, do I like marijuana or not? So that's, that's all I got. Go ahead.
No, to refocus that, I mean, I heard a comment, public comment tonight about the brick or stone style facade, and I did hear Mr. Hartman's identify that they're agreeable to the five recommended modifications. So that's, that's, that's one, you know, that's to refocus it, talk about it. I hear where you're going, and I hear where you're going, and I hear with the moratorium, the time has passed to be able to put something in place that would prohibit, but I think that that begs the question when we, let's look what we can do moving forward. Do we put something moving forward that we actually take the, you know, board's time and the staff's time to engage community, get feedback, and look at what those next steps are? Ms. Ayers, Mr. McCormick, as far as, you know, what are the appropriate steps to be able to further, you know, if the community, put, you know, if the community interest is not to allow medical marijuana dispensaries cultivation in grow locations, or whatever the, you know, is needed there for distribution, then we need to be able to take those actions. Again, I mean, unfortunately, we can't unwind the clock and go back to 2016 and pass a, pass a resolution that predates their twelve months of their application and where they currently are. That's the legal opinion that I've, I've heard as well. So just to refocus that, it is, you know, brick or facade. Is there anything you want to comment on, Mr. Becker, as far as the zoning of it, brick facade, landscape, to look at the overall package it is, or?
What is the material for the building and the package?
Mr. McCormick, what's the, what's the state for the material of the building?
I'll answer that one. It's fiber.
Can you, can you come up? If we have a couple of questions for you, we'll, yeah, you're the architect. The architect to come up, that'd be great. Thank you. I don't know. Thank you. Can you please state your name again for the record?
Yep. Craig Snyder with RDA.
Okay. Yeah, so what's the material that you have?
Fiber cement sliding.
Fiber cement sliding?
That's correct.
Okay.
My understanding is that is appropriate per the zoning ordinance, is that incorrect?
That's how it's been viewed up to this point.
Thank you.
And they have cedar planks on the rear.
Cedar planks for the security enclosure at the rear, yes.
Okay. Yeah, we have, that is what we have historically had through.
This, this case came in roughly within the first couple of days of when I started working here, so the staff here had been working with the applicants for, I don't know how long.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know when they started the design process and all that, but I did see that, again, like Ms. Kate said earlier, the twelve month application process.
Yeah, our involvement with the design here has been since February this year at the least, so this has been a long process, with a lot of vetting.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I think it's, as I'm in my mind, kind of reviewing other proposals that we've approved or we've seen over, over the years, they do typically have a brick or, or a stone facade for, you know, aesthetics. So, yeah, I would support making that modification to this proposal.
Yeah. And I know with that, I, I know we have fiber, the, would you say ceramic fiber board?
Fiber cement, yes. Hardy plank, if you would.
Yeah. The Hardy board, yeah. We've had that on, thinking of the Dollar General and a few different business locations on one twenty-five, so I know that's, but if you're asking that, is that something you consider to look at, any brick or stone type of facade?
Again, I, I wouldn't ask if that's a requirement of the zoning ordinance itself, it would be our preference to stay as designed.
Yeah. Mr. McCormick, is there any room for that to work through for any, any minor modification with it for administrative review, or is that?
So, yes, there are things that could be dealt with in administrative review. The zoning resolution itself does not contain the reference to the building materials, it's the comprehensive plan. And in my opinion, the comprehensive plan and the way that it's being used here is not the way that it's, and then the comprehensive plan is usually intended to be used as a guidance document.
Yeah.
Not as a, not as a resolution, and here they've been using it in terms of a resolution. They're not in the same type of document.
Okay.
And so there are changes that need to be made to the resolution, and that I will have been making a list. At the same time, you know, the materials are not in the resolution, the material issue is not in the resolution, and that's something that's been commonly cited, as far as I can tell from the staff reports, from the comprehensive plan.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you. Mr. Delzy, you have any questions? No? Okay. All right. Well, gentlemen, thank you. I said, yeah, I'm, just trying to stay, stay on, on the topic here as far as, so, yeah, it's going through this, the application, looking that it has met the submission requirements, you know, as required under Article Six, Section six-eight-four, six-eight-six, eleven-thirty, The determination that the proposed amendment is consistent with the spirit and ten of the zoning resolution, which it's a retail business and zoning calls for, for, in planned And we've not heard anything for any other additional zoning impacts or adjacent property impacts due to a zoning constraint. It's kind of very similar to the prior zoning case with the water runoff. There are certain things that are within scope that we have control on. So I've got no further comments at this time. So we're being asked, gentlemen, to, in accord to a Section six-eight-zero, six-eight-seven of the zoning resolution, to either enter motion of approve, approve of some modification, or deny the applicant's request to move, to approve a major amendment to an approved PD Plan Development District. Do we have that motion?
You already make a motion?
Yeah, do we have that motion?
You got it. You already made a motion.
Yeah, we already made motions. Oh, I'm sorry.
We had a prior motion.
Yeah, just open the discussion.
Is this modifying the motion?
Sorry. No, not modifying, just, I was just, I was just going back to the motion that we had to open the discussion, and so now we can.
Do we need to modify?
It's my understanding that the motion on the floor is to approve subject to the modifications that are listed in the staff report.
Correct.
So that is pending before the board. If you would like, I know we've been back and forth about the stone, you could choose to amend that to add an additional condition if you choose to do so. We've had some discussion about it not actually being in the zoning resolution of a requirement, but what is pending before the board is to approve subject to the modifications that are listed in the staff report before you.
So are we adding to the staff report, or adding the additional, the stone that we just talked about?
Not at this time, the, the response I got from Mr. McCormick as far as the, the response to the comprehensive plan being utilized to previously make those minor modifications is something that doesn't seem to support the legal challenge. So we can close discussion? Roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
No.
Motion carries.
Our gentleman, continue, Mr. McCormick, at this time, if you could begin presentation on the overlay district application.
Okay. The last application before you this evening is for an overlay application, applicant's funnel, hill, development, owner's board and development, One LLC. Property address is forty-five sixty East Gate Boulevard, with the parcel number listed, it's two-point-four, seven, eight acres. The zoning underlying the district is B-one, and it is in the central retail commercial corridor focus area on State Route thirty-two. See, applicant is seeking to develop approximately eleven thousand square foot animal daycare building on that site that you see here on this particular slide, near the East Gate Boulevard, seventy-four inters, Old Seventy-four intersection, it's approximately four-hundred-seventy-five feet east of that intersection. The property area around it is B-one on the south side of seventy-four, and on the north side is PD, and those, I think, are apartment buildings to the north. As far as the section of code, we're looking at Article thirteen, Section thirteen-hundred. In terms of the intention of the overlay districts, the supplemental regulations that are in these districts are intended to be less restricted than the base zoning, so as to give the board trustees the authority to implement specific purposes contained within this section, and whenever there's a conflict of the base zoning, the overlay district regulations shall supersede the base district regulations. In Section thirteen-ten, applications for zoning certificates in the, these districts shall be made pursuant to the Union Township resolution. Zoning resolution, the information required for submission shall demonstrate the need to modify the regulations for the zoning district. To be eligible for review of property must be zoned properly as an underlying zone, which in this case it is. And number five there, B, Board of Township shall consider the overlay district application, make appropriate findings of fact, and adopt a motion approving or denying the application. And prior to entering a final decision, the trustees may direct that further data may be necessary to make an informed decision. As far as land use plan, again, this is in that thirty-two central retail corridor, riding commercial businesses, very intensity, residential use is located across Old Seventy-four, as I mentioned earlier. This is the primary commercial area still in Union Township. A lot of new development activities, including new development, which development has remained steady, and development is also, significant redevelopment, redevelopment is also likely to improve the proximity to potential of the East Gate Mall and surrounding properties. Mentioned the applicant's proposal for this site. It is currently a subject, it's a vacant parcel, it's a remainder of a development that came in in the nineties, when the rest of that strip center was built. There is a, to the west there, southwest here of the, of the site here, even closest to where the Looking North is, that's, that's a regional stormwater basin that we referenced in the staff report there, I think at the end, we'll come back to that. There, the access is currently a right-in, right-out, and it's also accessible through East Gate Boulevard, through some other property that was part of that original development plan in the nineties. Lot of vegetation there, there's a lot of vegetation on the lot, overgrown trees, brush and debris, it's not maintained very well from the looks at it, and you'll see that in the pictures that we took. The applicant has proposed a building consistent of the traditional building material that is recommended in the comprehensive plan, with a fenced-in outdoor area for the dogs. Parking circulation has been provided consistent with the proposed use, and the parking demands are not anticipated to be substantial for a building of this size, and the applicant is actually proposing far fewer parking spaces than what would be required by code, which the staff supports because there's already plenty of parking in that area, and as the applicant's demonstrated, they don't need more spaces than, than what's, what's being shown. So this is the, the plan that's proposed. The applicant has adjusted this plan based on staff's comments. It meets all the setback standards that are in the ordinance. The proposed landscaping plan enhances the property quite well, provides cover to the proposed dumpster, which was relocated a bit to be out of the driveway area for the right-in, right-out that runs along the rear of a lot of those businesses that are there. I think the property to the south is an office max, and it runs along the back part of that into the backs of the strip malls. The proposed signage is appropriate based on the proposed materials. Again, the building materials are acceptable, the access is good. There, there are some things that are going to need to be upgraded as far as the right-in and right-out, and we are going to rely on the engineer for Camp, Claremont County's take on the, how to improve that right-in, right-out, and also the, the, where sidewalk would be located in terms of being in the right of way or not, but there's a sidewalk proposed for the site as well to address that part of the recommendations and requirements. Trying not to read everything word for word. So looking, this is looking north on the oblique at the site. The, the site proposes for this, there to be a split for that right-in, right-out, if you put an imaginary line kind of in the middle there. There would be a lot split here, and this would be a remainder. And it's not identified what that remainder would involve at this point. And it's not identified what that remainder would involve at this point in time. These are the site pictures staff took. This is looking west on Old Seventy-four. Sites on the left. This is looking east from the right in, right out. This is looking towards the site across Old Seventy-four from Deerfield Boulevard. The site's kind of where I'm certainly right now. The bank is there next to that. This is looking south from the right in, right out. You can see the vegetation, what it looks like, sites on the right. Sites on the left is looking back the same direction. You see the trash that's there on the, on the left. It's very common up and down through there. This is the condition of the right in, right out, and will have to be improved. And you can see, this is the site here, kind of the backside, there's a lot of trash, and at one point in time, I think there were maybe people camping, living there, from what I've been told by the zoning inspector. This is looking from the bank area towards the site in the background, northeast. Office Max would be under right. The remaining modifications that we are requesting or trying to address are those that would come up during the other agency reviews. I mentioned the detention basin and the sidewalk. The detention basin, what we're trying to determine is that, that they have the right to, to put the water in that basin. We believe that that is the case based on the information we have so far. The engineer's office will have to make that final determination and/or with soil and water. But that, that appears to be the case, and there also appears to be an easement there for everyone to be able to use that right in, right out access through the backside of that development. But we are going to make sure that's finalized and addressed administratively if the project moves forward. We want anticipated finalized peak and average daily traffic volumes. We did get traffic on another site to give us an idea of what, what it would look like, and it was pretty low volume, not anything that, that would, I think, trigger a major traffic analysis, nowhere near that. And they do not have retail that they're selling on the property, which was another question that we had that might affect the traffic. There was also an indication there was going to be no overnight boarding of animals, which we found interesting because that, they do offer that elsewhere as far as the use. We need them to identify the loading, unloading area, and you need to verify the final square footage of the proposed structure because there are some discrepancies, but that's also an administrative minor item. And that's what remained as far as what was in the staff report. Any questions on that one? We did receive one written comment that I forwarded to you today that I, we, we just received it today. And that was not from a neighbor. That was from a business owner that more or less is in the same, they provide the same services in the community.
Good.
You said they're not open twenty-four hours?
They have told us that they are not keeping animals overnight, and I don't know what the reason for that is because we have been told that that is something they offer elsewhere. I mean, I'm, my only guess at this point may be they, they are, I have a hard time getting the staff to do that.
We can control the product that they offer, but.
But that was a significant difference between this proposed use versus the people that called and sent the letter in today who actually do keep the animals overnight.
Okay. All right. At this time, thank you. We'll open public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak on behalf as a proponent?
Matt Nolan. The attorney for Henkel Schuler Bunnel Hill Development, three thousand G, Lebanon, four five oh three six.
Sure, tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you out?
I do. I just want, want to really state for questions, but, but there seems to be a one miscommunication. There will be overnight boarding. So I'm not sure where that got relayed. There, the plan is for overnight boarding. It's not open twenty-four hours. It opens usually six AM to eight PM, but the dogs stay overnight. There's cameras.
That makes sense.
Got it.
That makes sense.
So that may have been where the communication came in. They're not open twenty-four hours. Dogs are not out at night in the mornings, anything like that, but there will be dogs kept there.
That makes sense.
But indoors. Indoors, overnight.
Indoors, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
Only thing that we have, appreciate everyone's support and working through this.
Yeah. Thank you. Appreciate Mr. Nolan. This time, is there anyone further has proponent or opponent testimony? Okay. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Open for board comments. Gentlemen?
Uh, sure. So, yeah, I'm real familiar with the area. I live right around the corner from it. The, the photos, you know, sum it up quite well. The, so that area of, you know, there's a lot of brush there currently. That brush collects garbage as it flies out of Kroger's parking lot. I think having some type of business there, and I'm certainly fine with what, what the proposal was, will really help clean up that lot, and, and, and they'll be able to police the, the trash that comes flying out of Kroger's parking lot, which will then hopefully keep it, keep it off of Old Seventy-four as well.
Good. Good. Yeah. You're right about that. Couldn't agree more. I'm excited for you to be on that site. It's much needed. I think the, the product itself is much needed. Not very many here in the township. And, yeah, I'm, I'm excited for, for you folks to be in our community. Make sure to invite us to grand opening when it happens, so.
Please do.
Yeah. I mean, to, to that point, you make a great point, so there's not many in the community. So it was a few months ago that we made a resolution that made the change. There was, Susan, if you present, state, speak to it better, but basically the township had a resolution in place that required a veterinarian doctor on site for any type of animal kennel. So it really precluded any type of, you know, product offering like this for, for kennels, animal kennels, you know, for your common house pets.
With limitations on numbers of animals.
Okay. All right. As applicant, are you aware of the recommendations, items one, two, three, four, and five? Recommend and modify?
We are aware, and we will comply with all of those. We have no objection to any of the recommendations, and I thought I'd say, we, it's been a long night, I apologize, but, uh, you know, we build these all over the country. The worst words we hear is when a staff comes and says we're developer friendly, because it usually means we're going to get a thousand things that we have to do. This is, other than tonight, been the easiest process we've been through, and it's been great. So we do really appreciate everybody's support during.
Good. Good. Appreciate it. All right. Thank you. All right, gentlemen. Anyone, any further comments?
Yes, sir.
Okay. At this time, we'll close the board comments, and we're seeking a motion for, to either approve, modify with recommendation, or deny. The focus overlay district application, which in this case consists of the development of a new eleven thousand square foot freestanding building associated improvements that's submitted along with any further modifications deemed appropriate by the board.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
No further discussion. Roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Lo?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for staying with us tonight.
Appreciate your patience.
All right, gentlemen, that concludes the public hearings. Is there any old business? I see none. Moving forward, new business. Item Alpha, the approval of payments. We're being asked a motion to approve payments prepared by the fiscal officer, Mr. Ron Campbell. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Hearing no discussion, roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Lo?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item Bravo, approval of monthly financial report. We're seeking a motion to approve monthly financial report as prepared by fiscal officer, Mr. Ron Campbell. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Hearing no discussion, roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Lo?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item Charlie, approval of purchase orders. Approval of purchase orders exceeding ten thousand is recommended by Ms. Susan Ayers. Township administrator, would you like to present those, Ms. Ayers?
Thank you, sir. First is twenty-six thousand, seven hundred dollars for Fleet Core Technologies for fuel usage. Second is also Fleet Core Technologies fuel usage for one month, thirteen thousand, one hundred fifty dollars and eighty-six cents. Third is National Shot Creek LLC for Brantner Lane Culvert Piper Pair, thirty-six thousand dollars. Next matters for JK Mirror Corporation for the Austin Drive Culvert Replacement in the amount of seventeen thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. Finally, total quality logistics for reimbursement on the economic development agreement for September in the amount of thirty thousand, nine hundred, sixty-one dollars and eighteen cents.
Thank you, Ms. Ayers. Gentlemen, are there any questions for Ms. Ayers on purchase orders?
Yes, sir.
All right. We're seeking approval of purchase orders. It seems to do have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing no discussion, roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Lo?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item Delta, the approval of resolutions. We've got Resolution twenty-twenty-two dash thirty-nine, seeking approval. There's resolution to approve the enterprise zone incentive recommendations. Ms. Ayers, would you like to introduce us?
Yes. Thank you. Um, we've had some ongoing discussions, I believe, for extended period of time before I got here about the potential expansion for total quality, quality logistics for a third expansion building on their facility here in the township. We've been having some ongoing discussions with them about potential incentives to help them complete and move forward with that project. I'm proposing tonight, asking for the board's recommendation to enter into an enterprise zone agreement with total quality logistics. This would ultimately result in a ten-year, ten percent tax abatement for the value of the property improvement. TQL officials anticipate this building being valued at approximately forty-three point five million dollars in investment and providing a thousand additional employees that will be in the township area. If the board approves this tonight, the recommendation would go to Claremont County, and the commissioners will ultimately address the matter, I believe, on November the second to complete the abatement process. It is important in my mind to note that with this agreement, we've had some of the discussions with TQL and have asked them to consider, and they have been happy to agree to make an annual donation to the township for the purposes of parks and community events in the amount of fifteen percent of the value of the abatement. So granting the abatement, they are coming to the table to be a, continue to be a great community partner and donate that additional money to promote park events and events around the township. We anticipate the, with using the valuation at forty-three point five million, that this abatement would be worth approximately one hundred and eleven thousand dollars per year, which would result in a donation back to the township of sixteen thousand, five hundred, approximately.
Thank you, Ms. Ayers. Gentlemen, are there any questions, comments for Ms. Ayers on this?
Yes, sir.
Well, all right, we're right now, we're, do we have the motion? We're seeking a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-twenty-two dash thirty-nine, resolution approving enterprise zone incentive recommendation for total quality logistics LLC expansion project. Do we have that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, gentlemen?
Yes, sir.
Just say, I'll just give the quick comment as far as great partnership that, that we see with them, and I think that's the first time having that type of agreement in place, which is wonderful, at least something specific for township parks and township events. Thank you. Good work to the team. We'll close the discussion. Roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Lo?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Continue moving forward, Resolution twenty-twenty-two dash forty. Ms. Ayers, would you present that resolution?
Yes, thank you. Um, as this board is well aware, we have been participating, I believe, since two thousand six, two thousand and seven, in the Claremont County Transportation Improvement District, or the TID, as it is commonly known. The TID works around the entire county with numerous road improvement projects. Recently, this has included Klepper Lane Extension, Route Thirty-two Improvements at Bell's Lane, Round Bottom Road Bridge Replacement. CCTID is also working on the Alc, the Icoles Road Improvements and the Bach-Buxton Roundabout for twenty-twenty-three. As part of this establishment back to twen, two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, the township pledged funds to the C, the TID in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars per year for a thirty-year span. So that would be two thousand and seven payment through two thousand and thirty-six. These funds are used by the TID for local match and the required cost of the improvement, frequently right-of-way acquisitions and construction costs to help the projects happen. I was approached by TID officials indicating there were some financial concerns for the TID, and this has been a result of overages in construction projects. Really runs into two sets of buckets. Projects have gone over recently because of right-of-way costs as well as some of the construction costs. For example, the Old Seventy-four construction project ended fourteen, or excuse me, four point one million dollars over a two thousand and eighteen estimate. This was because of one point eight million dollars in right-of-way costs, overage, and two point one in construction costs. The Klepper Lane Extension exceeded the estimate by three million. This was two point six million in right-of-way acquisition costs and three hundred thousand in construction costs. Because of these overages, TID officials are worried about cash flow able to continue their operations. They have asked in order to help correct this situation that all of the funding parties, for lack of a more eloquent term, front load one year of their commitment so that we would pay an additional hundred thousand dollars in this fiscal year, but the agreement would end a year early. So we're front-loading our payment from twenty thirty-six to this year to help them build back up their reserves and continue to finance these projects in the township. I know the TID officials were not happy to have to come back to the table and ask for this, nor, you know, am I happy to be able to bring this to you, but I do think it is necessary, given where we are with the inflationary environment, and the township is getting a lot of benefit to the operations of the TID. And so I think we are reaping the benefit of making these payments and being in this intergovernmental agreement. So what is before you is authorization for me to enter into an amended version of the intergovernmental agreement that would allow us to expend the additional hundred thousand dollars this year and terminate the agreement a year early?
Thank you, Ms. Ayers. Gentlemen, we're seeking a motion to approve twenty-twenty-two dash forty. Do we have that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that, please?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to make a few comments about the Claremont County Transportation Improvement District, commonly known as CCTID. So I've been attending their meetings for, oh, maybe ten years now, pretty, pretty regularly. For eight of those ten years, I was an ex-officio member when I, when I was in the General Assembly. I'm a, I'm a very strong believer in what they do, their, their mission, the success that they had. If you look at the construction around Claremont County, you know, the lion's share of it is here in Union Township. You know, they, they, they take local funds and, you know, they, they bring in the federal and, and the state funds as well. They leverage all of that. You might call it a force multiplier, I think, in your, your words. And, and, and they are responsible for much of the construction and improvement that we've had in Union Township. And, you know, the amount that we give back is just far greater than, than what we give them, and I'm all in.
Thank you. Mr. Dills?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'll just keep it as simple as saying transportation drives economic development, so, I mean, like you said, you see that benefit, so. All right. We'll close the discussion, roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Lo?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Gentlemen, that brings us to, we have a question on the table here for item Echo, which is a twenty-twenty-three budget discussion. And with the timeline of tonight, with the extended public comment on the front end of the very beginning of the meeting, and our public hearings, we know that it's five minutes after ten, so we're going to keep that in mind. I think there's probably a few comments, closing comments that board members may be fresh on their minds, especially after some of the public hearings, as you said, focused on one thing, on zoning, but I think there's some other, I know I've got some stuff on my mind that would be good to share. And been very excited to be able to get into what I've been asking, talking with Ms. Ayers for, and, you know, part of day one interviews was, you know, better transparency, communication, accountability tools from the township to the people, and that's where we kind of drive down this path of, of having an initial overview of the twenty-twenty-three budget process and building something from the ground up. So I, before I kind of hand the floor to Ms. Ayers on that, or collectively, would hand the floor to Ms. Ayers on that, um, or collectively, would you want to invest, um, much time into her giving a full brief and update on that now, uh, or would you like to push that to a future agenda so we can get to, to board comments and, uh, and close on, on the evening, this meeting?
I'm, I'm fine with next month's meeting. That's fine.
Yeah, how much time are we talking about?
I have about twenty slides. What I would suggest is, um, there are, this is not of immediate. Um, you are not voting on anything tonight. You are actually not being asked to vote on anything at the next meeting. Um, so I think there is plenty of time to go over it. This is mostly a transparency tool to be able to discuss it with the public. I think we could very easily table it till the next meeting, given the hour.
That's fine. I'm comfortable with that.
I agree.
So I'm excited for.
I approve her message.
Sounds good. So we will do that. So that, um, so we're tabling item Echo, uh, and moving forward. Then we get to comments from the board.
Yeah. Um, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think we might want to consider a motion to table that item.
A motion, okay. Can, can, thank you. Uh, entertain a motion to table item Echo for next month.
So moved.
Second.
No further discussion. Roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Lo?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, gentlemen, we've got comments from the board. Um, let me just hit a, just a couple up front for us, okay? This is just fresh on my mind with, again, the discussion with the, uh, one public hearing. We, we really had the same thing happening there in the first hearing case and the second hearing case. Something that is outside essentially in my perspective of it and from talking with, um, the experts, legal counsel, et cetera, the scope of what we're looking at. We're looking at the, the resolution. But we've already talked resolution tonight. I just want to talk bigger picture. Um, you know, medical marijuana. So there is the, there is the, the ability to put a moratorium in place. And I think that maybe, you know, we want to hear from the community, and we want to have Mr. McCormick and, and Ms. Ayers, you know, push, you know, strategically into that direction of what's the best way to have community feedback on that. Obviously, they're already doing things like doing an RFP for, you know, technology tools to help us with community feedback. So I'm not going to expect anything overnight, but, you know, I think in general, this is something that could be years, not now, but could have been years in the process, because I believe that that, uh, Ohioirise Code was first enacted in two thousand sixteen that allowed, uh, a location like Union Township to be able to put a moratorium in place and say, we do not want it here in Union Township. We do not want it in Mount Carmel, et cetera. So I just, I'm interested in getting community feedback. So if there's a general sense from the board, that's all I'm asking for, uh, to empower Ms., Ms. Ayers and Mr. McCormick. I'm seeing some head nods. Sound good? Okay. Sounds good. All right. Thank you. Because the, the other topic that comes to mind on that, and they'll put that as a question of, as you kind of, uh, get, you know, more sharper on, on that and what's in place. But I believe you walk into jungle gyms, there's hookahs and bongs in there, right next to the cigars. I, I know, um, I know I've seen hookahs. Um, so, I mean, it's kind of a question. I've heard that comment tonight. It's like, there's hookahs and bar, and bongs in there. So, you know, does this, do we make it, you know, just, just know what we're getting into as far as what, again, is in the scope of the board and the powers, uh, that Ohioirise Code have, have, uh, given. Um, all right, gentlemen, I'll hand it over to you. I just want to get that first one off the top. Go ahead.
Um, sure. We've all noticed Mr. Matt Taylor's not here, our service director. Uh, his daughter, uh, it's our neighbors up north, plays for Milford. I'm a graduate of Milford, and their soccer team was sixteen and oh, ranked number ninth in the country, number one in the state of Ohio. Um, and so I want to say, and his daughter plays for him. Lindsay Taylor plays for him. So that's a great one to give her a shout out. Frustrating, heartbreaking, because I texted Matt, hey, man, what's the score? And, uh, they lost one-nothing, last game of the season. You know, so kind of a bummer. But, uh, I think that's the most, uh, you know, it's too bad it's not West Claremont, but I think it's the most successful any girls' team out of Milford's ever had. But, uh, congratulations to them. Um, grand opening Sports World House was great. It was fun. It was good. It was, yeah, it was very exciting. Line wrapped around the building. Um, I couldn't believe it at, you know, whatever time that was in the morning, and, uh.
Eight AM, starving.
Yeah. Um, and I had a resident reach out to me, um, and we've been exchanging a few emails, uh, back and forth for the past week about, uh, the goose, uh, Canadian geese problem at Veterans Park. And, uh, he was asking for a humanitarian way to get rid of them, and I could not agree more. Uh, I forwarded on to Matt Taylor, and, uh, he's reaching out to some experts to, to basically try our best to get rid of these things, uh, humanely, of course, as possible. Um, but, uh, I can't stand those things. And so if they went away, I would sleep just fine tonight.
Is a twenty-two rifle humane enough to do that?
I mean, so.
Chief Kavigley can probably answer on that, because I've, I've had the conversation and there's, how many per year? It's like, how many per year? And then Detective Hines told me the answer before.
Yeah, he, uh, Detective Hines is a little more that than me, but it's, it's, it's much.
It's like.
It's ridiculous. And then, uh, you know, you gotta think the kids are playing soccer on the field and the ball fields and just walking on it. So, um, we are, uh, Mr. Taylor, we're, we're actively working to, to try our best to humanely solve that problem. But sake of time, that's all I got.
Thank you. Mr. Becker?
Uh, yeah, so, you know, yeah, going back to the marijuana discussion, I really, I really did appreciate the, the debate we had. Uh, you know, both sides of this issue, you know, co, coming forward, the, the multiple perspectives, I, I really, really appreciate and, and enjoyed that. Uh, I was just wondering if anybody noticed the, um, with the medical marijuana facility, when I inquired about what retail products are you selling? And she said rolling papers. Okay? Rolling papers are, well, rolling papers are not illegal, but rolling papers are for smoking marijuana. Smoking marijuana is illegal, medical or otherwise, under state law. Why are they selling roller papers? Obviously, it's to smoke it, which is illegal. Just wanted to, uh, point that out. I don't know if anybody noticed that as, as well. Also, I think that is all I have. Thank you.
Um, I, as I just have to segue part of that, and I'll do my normal announcements here, but, um, like, I see those at jungle gyms too, you know, and pretty much any gas station. So it's, to what extent? Um, so anyway, we'll look for the staff and look for feedback and.
Well, you can sell, you can smoke tobacco with them.
That's right.
But they're not selling tobacco at the marijuana shop.
I, I, yeah. I don't believe that it's, uh, smoke, I think they said that there's not, it's not smokable. And Chief Kavigley has given me the look too, because he probably interacts with any of some of these concerns that people come up with crime, et cetera. But, um, to my knowledge, um, at least what is presented, it was not what you're thinking of, the stories of, you know, rolling and smoking something. Um, okay. So fireworks, uh, we had that great fireworks display, but I just want to say, Susan, thank you. That was, uh, uh, for me, that was the first time being invited to the Civic Center here and seeing something behind the scenes where the fireworks go off. But more importantly, I saw, like, all the staff and employees together, and that was great. Um, so, um, that was, that was wonderful to know that, that that goes on and, and be able to, to be here. So thanks for setting that up. I think that's wonderful. Um, a reminder to just all the parents and everyone out there, again, that the fentanyl, uh, that's being pushed, and the Halloween, Halloween is coming around the corner, and there's rainbow-colored fentanyl and kit, children's toys. And, um, and I know I'm definitely going to be checking our candy, you know? So, uh, just, just something to do, because I don't think it's something that anyone intentfully does, but you go buy something in bulk somewhere or whatever, you know? Trust but verify.
Don't be stealing my kids' candy.
So, um, so then we'll reiterate, we've got, uh, junk days, October twentieth, twenty-first, twenty-second, from seven to five PM on the twentieth and twenty-first, and then on twenty-second on Saturday, eight to three PM. Um, election day is on November eighth, so get out and vote. And our next Board of Trustees meeting is adjusted for that election day. It's going to be on November fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two, at six PM. Uh, next Parks and Recreation Committee, Committee meeting will be on November ninth, twenty-twenty-two, at six PM. That committee's been formed. If you've got interesting feedback, uh, that you want to share, I'm sure there's an avenue, uh, for, for people to attend from the public. I'm unable to attend with you because it'd be an improper meeting, so, um, but, uh, but, um, but thanks for taking the lead on that. Um, the farmer's market, uh, as we stated, um, is in operation, and that's up until, you said, the twenty-first, so, of October. So those are the announcements tonight. Thank you all to the staff, uh, everyone's dedicated time and resources tonight, uh, as we went through many public comments and many public hearings. Uh, it's great to have that feedback from the community, and as we look forward, it can always create the proper venue to get the right feedback at the right time so we can make informed decisions. At this time, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
No further discussion. Roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Lo?
Yes.
We are adjourned at ten fifteen PM.
Thank you.
Thank you.